Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 10 minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 5 minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 2 minutes. Okay, if everybody wants to see, find a seat, we will get started shortly. Wow, see how that works? So at precisely 4:00 PM, we will call the May 21st, 2024 Volusia County Council Meeting to Order. And the way that we start our meetings, we're going to change just slightly, but we're going to start as we always do with a prayer. If you are part of a faith group who would like to participate in an invocation, you're welcome to do that. Just send an email to Carissa Green, it's actually K, the letter K, green@volusia.org. This is K Green over here to my left, and she will get you all set up to do that. Are you going to pray, Don? And then right after the invocation, which today will be by Pastor Mose Hawkins from the No Limit Praise Tabernacle in Deland, right after he's done, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. And then what's going to be different today is we're going to go right into a very special proclamation for a member of our community who deserves our recognition. So if you would stand with me, if you care to, for the invocation, Pastor Mose?
Amen. Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to first serve you. And Lord, we pray now that you would give wisdom, God, to these council members, God, whom you have put in those chairs, God. And Father, we pray now, God, that they would put you in their hearts, God, as every decision that they make, God, that it would be God for the betterment of your people, Father. Father, we ask that you continue to bless this county, God, all its citizens, Father. We pray, God, as business is discussed today, Lord God, that it will be done in such a way, Lord God, that it will bring peace, God, and unity, even if the decision is to agree to disagree. So Father, we pray now for your presence in this room, God. We pray now, God, that you would give understanding, God, that you would bring unity as we tend to the business concerning our county. We thank you for your blessings, God, that rest upon this county, God, and upon this, these men and women that are in this room. We ask this in your son's name, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Some of you, when you came in, might have saw a lot of activity down in the rotunda, and we had the opportunity to add a member to the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame. I can't see him, but I'm sure he's sitting there, Joseph Szysinski. And we wanted to carry that over to this meeting. He was awarded a special plaque in that Hall of Fame, one of seven people to earn that honor. We, all of us in this room, honor our veterans and our first responders. Joseph, it's, it's our honor to have you here today, and Jake. Oh, there he is. Jake will do, will start the proclamation for Mr. Szysinski. Congratulations.
Welcome again, Joe. This is a proclamation from Volusia County, Florida. Whereas Joseph Szysinski is a true American patriot who served honorably in the US Air Force during the Korean War, and whereas he served as a crew chief for F-84 jet fighter bombers with the 49th Fighter Bomber Squadron in Japan and Korea, and was later deployed to the United States to join the 4701 airborne early warning squadron in Sacramento, California, and whereas after leaving the military, Mr. Szysinski founded firms that provided technical, writing, and contract engineering services, both of which supported the aerospace industry, and whereas he is a renowned asset to the veteran community, understatement, having served as president and commander of the Korean War Veterans Association in Port Orange, vice president for the state association, and first vice president of the Veterans Museum and Education Center in Daytona Beach, and whereas he has been inducted into the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame, which honors military veterans who throughout their works and lives during and after the military service have made a significant contribution to the state of Florida, and whereas he and his wife of 68 years, Anita, 69? 69, live in Port Orange and have two children, four grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Volusia County, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 21st, 2024, as Joseph Szysinski Day in Volusia County, and urge all residents to honor his, this outstanding man for serving his country, community, and local veterans. Dated this 21st day of May, 2024, signed by the County Council. Joe, thank you so much. All right, now Pat's going to make us do some stuff. Sorry, don't sit on yet. How do you want us?
What are we doing, Pat?
Let's see, everybody stand here.
Here, come on over here. I got you, brother. Here, I'll take this.
Okay.
Let's see if I can see everybody. Oh, I can. Okay, wait a minute. I'm sorry, I'm going through. Okay. All right, you'll go first. Okay. All right, this row, take one step that way. Everybody go one step that way. Okay. This is nice. I see you. One more. Oh, okay. All right. Another step that away. Okay, I see you. Ready? I'm done. Okay. What's, oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Let's get him in there. Okay. All right. Do you want to be in? You'll get in there, too. Yeah, that's nice. Ready? Okay, now you two stand. Okay, now I'd like to ask the previous inductees to come forward for another picture. All right. Yes, you can sit down.
What a great way to start a Volusia County Council Meeting in the, in the presence of greatness and someone who has served so honorably, all of those men and their families. So Carissa, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Reinhardt.
Here.
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Santiago. Mr. Dempsey. Mr. Johansson. Mr. Kent.
Here.
Mr. Brower.
Here. So we do have a quorum, six of us. We will start, as usual, with public participation if we, and we do. I will call your names. You also have an opportunity to speak on items. This is the first public participation. You can speak about anything that you want on county matters. When I call your name, just come up to the podium. Please try and make sure you have a microphone close to your mouth so that we can hear you. It is being broadcast to thousands of people. Don't let that make you nervous. And you have three minutes to speak to the council. There is a clock above my head and on the monitor in front of you. Please stay within three minutes because we have a lot of people that want to speak. First, today, he's going to show you how to do it, is John Nicholson.
Yes, I've been here before. John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. I've been bringing this up wherever I go, whenever there's a meeting of city or county. We're in an age where it's politically correct, and it's killing us, all right? We choose people by their race, by their religion, by gender. The last time I heard, there's 49 genders. I know two, and I don't care to know anymore, all right? So I understand people have differences. However, by concentrating on our differences, it's hurting us in the long run. When I grew up, we were not considered a community of salad. We were a melting pot. Because what people did was they fell into the community and joined the community. We're not doing that anymore. We're keeping, separating people constantly, and that's hurting us. I often talk to you about the value of Daytona Beach. Daytona Beach is the center of development here on Volusia County, where the political engine for the county. Our tourism is very valuable to the county. So if you read the paper on Sunday, the city is raising half a billion dollars to put into Midtown. In the last 17 years, there's only been two projects on beachside, well, three, when you include the Daytona Grand. But all the money that's spent, one for the boardwalk, $750,000, one for the median, $750,000, that's it from the city. It is imperative that the hotel people get together. We would not be here today if the hotel people had paid attention to something outside their front door, something other than rooms and beds. They have to know what's going on. Daytona Beach, if you walk down it, it's deteriorated terribly. It can't be. Everybody, wherever they go, it's pristine. You go on a cruise ship, you can't find a piece of paper. Go to Disney, you can't find a piece of paper. Go to Daytona Beach, not a problem. It concerns all of you. Ormond Beach makes money off the events in Daytona Beach. Everybody makes money off the events in Daytona Beach. You can't kill the goose that lays the golden egg. You have to pay attention to what's going on. We're being sued because we don't represent our citizens on our city commission. The paper came out yesterday, 84,000 people in the city of Daytona Beach. We divided it on 70,000 people. One of our zones is over 12,000 people, over capacity. They are not being represented. Thank you.
Angie Sutton? If you would, if I didn't say it, when you, when you come up to speak, just tell us what part of the county you're from. You don't have to give your entire address for safety reasons, but your representative here would like to know where you're from.
Angie Sutton, District 3. I'm here to speak out against the proposed motocross track.
I'm here to speak out against the proposed motocross track. There was a public meeting with over 200 people in attendance, and we've not heard anything since. The flooding, the noise, the lights, and the constant traffic are all an immediate impact to those of us in the surrounding neighborhoods. Take it somewhere where there is more of an open area and less of an impact. There are so many more logical places for it to go, in my opinion. That's somewhere out along US 92, along the Daytona Beach area. Daytona Beach has many, many hotel rooms, restaurants, the beach, for people to do, not just for the people that want to come and ride. Those of us in the neighborhoods are not against a project like this. We're just against a project like this in our backyard. There's already so much flooding due to all the new construction happening around us that no one is taking that into consideration and thinking about us. All you see are dollar signs. Tamoka Farms Road corridor has grown so much and is just continuing to do so. Towns West has caused our area to flood the worst it has ever flooded. During a hard rain, we have standing water in our yard. Heaven forbid we get a hurricane. During the last hurricane, my grandson was in our front yard in a John boat with a motor whipping around, just having the time of his life because we had so much water. And it takes days for it to go away. And then we have mosquitoes. So then we're on the phone with mosquito control constantly, trying to get them to come out. And are you taking into consideration the traffic this will bring to Tamoka Farms Road? The main entrance is right on a very dangerous curve. Have you thought about that? Tamoka Farms Road is only a two-lane road and is already overcrowded, even though every traffic study that's done for every new project states otherwise. Just ask anyone who lives off of it that tries to pull out of there in the morning. It's like taking your life into your own hands. You either sit there and wait forever, or you just pull out and floor it to get into the flow of traffic. We're simply asking that you take us, that are already there, into consideration and look for a more suitable place for this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Schneider. And you will be followed by Madeline Hall.
Thanks for the time. This is my first time. I'm Andrew Schneider, and I'm from the Port Orange area. And I'd also like to speak about the proposed motocross track. My family's with me over there. We don't get time off. I had to take time off and bring the girls here to talk about this. So it's a pretty important topic to me. It's my first time here, first time speaking about this. And I live behind the proposed track. And I would just like to say, from a qualitative perspective, I am against this because we moved to that specific area. One of my main concerns is the noise. And I would also echo the person who spoke before me in saying that there seem to be, again, from my very limited perspective, from, I don't have the data that you have in front of yourselves, other areas that are far less populated. We specifically moved to this area because we enjoy being further away from the city. We enjoy the zoning that it is. And it seems like it's being rezoned in this area for something that is highly commercial for commercial operations and not into consideration for the families that have bought these homes in that area. And so I'm bringing my family here today. I'm taking time off. My wife's taking time off. We don't have anybody watch the kids because it's important enough to us to talk about this issue. I'd also like to echo comments about the traffic and my concerns there, potential smell that blows into our area, dust that can blow into our area, the flooding that already is in the area. And I thank you for your time.
And Madeline Hall is coming forward. And next, after Madeline, will be Elizabeth Caprio.
Ditto everything that was said before me, so I won't repeat any of that. I am from District 2, and I live in Town West, Westport on Town West Boulevard. I'm the last subdivision that got built. We built out there to have quiet and peace. But I have several questions that need to be considered. The economic impact it's gonna have on our existing residents, especially the value of our homes. We now pay taxes on a high value. And if our property drops, will our taxes drop? That's number one. And I know we have to fight that ourselves to get our taxes changed. The noise pollution. I work at Daytona Speedway. As a go-kart driver, I come home filthy. And that's an asphalt track. We're gonna have dirt tracks. No asphalt, except for some parking. The filth, the dust, the noise. We don't see a sound barrier anywhere on the plans that you presented. The plans show an open area with no housing. I don't know how old that map was that was drawn on, but there are so many houses right across from there, and when you see it. But you also look at the other plans that they showed in comparison. There are no homes around any of those. The one in Gainesville, the one, I don't remember. Bennett Park, all these different places. It doesn't show any homes at all, and they're finished. So, the third thing was, how are you gonna help communicate to the news? No one told us about a meeting. I don't know where people find it. It says that you're gonna make it available for the community to hold meetings for residential feedback. You've had one meeting, I found out after the fact. I redid, went through all of your agendas to see, and I have an exact timeline, when it was proposed, when it was talked about, when it was presented. And it's, I don't see any community feedback coming here, except for the 200 people that got lucky and found out about it. And then, it was one more. Quick, quick, quick. Oh, what other sites have you considered besides the one on Tamoka Farms Road? Because the traffic, I'm right there at that intersection. That traffic is horrendous. We put up with Bike Week. We knew it was there. We understood that when we bought our home. We put up with Bike Toberfest. We knew about that before we bought our home. But we had no idea about plans three years ago to put a super motocross track that does not serve the children, but it serves adults who can pay for it. You're putting in RVs, padding, parking? That's not for kids. Our neighbors who think this is a great idea think their kids are gonna walk across the street and go ride their dirt bikes. They got another thing coming. Thank you.
Elizabeth Caprio. And you will be followed by Debbie Forrester.
My name's Elizabeth Caprio. I'm District 2, Port Orange. Ditto to everything that's been said ahead of me about the motocross. I also did not find out about the meeting for feedback until the day after it happened, and I heard it on the news. I haven't heard anything about an environmental impact study. The water that sat in the woods off of Tamoka Farms, sat there close to a month. I would hate to see what would happen without it, and I don't know how big, how far you'd have to dig down for that to go anywhere. I can't imagine the winds and the water combined coming into the Westport community that, at the most, is five and a half years old. Coming into that community as well as into Coquina Cove and Hawksnest without the benefit of those trees, it would have the same adverse impact of removal of the mangrove trees has had on the people that live on the coastline. There is a substantial amount of wildlife across the street in this area that is being considered, including some eagles that come down and fish in our retention ponds. They're absolutely gorgeous. I can't imagine I'll ever see one fly around again. And I want to know what the flood plane will change to. Right now, Westport Reserve is not considered a flood zone. We know that that can change in the drop a hat. You remove the natural barriers and you subject all of us to ruin. We, I grew up in central Florida. When I retired, we moved. I moved to Connecticut many years ago. When I retired, my husband and I moved here. We looked at many places in the Port Orange area, including Pinnacle. The noise from '95 was prohibitive. Tamoka Road, not bad. We know about Bike Week. We know about Bike Toberfest, the other odds and ends. We can actually hear from the Daytona 500 when it's going. Not when you're right up next to it, but we can hear it. I can't imagine motorcycles with no mufflers, with decibel levels that go 106 to 125, dozens of them at the same time. Try it in your backyard. Thank you.
Debbie Forrester.
Thank you for your time. Debbie Cruck Forrester, Commander of Ormond Strong. In the spirit of honoring all who serve, I'm here to let you know about an event we're having. It's gonna be Saturday, June 1st, from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM. Takes place at the Ormond Memorial Arts and Gardens. It's the 8th Annual Ormond Strong, J.G. Martin, Military Veteran, First Responder Family Appreciation Day. It's gonna be inside. We have AC. And it's a free event for everybody. The community can participate. The Ormond Memorial Art and Gardens was founded by World War I and World War II veterans. We wanted to have it there before, but it wasn't open at the time that we usually have this event. So we're excited to go there because our veterans are getting older slower, but our enthusiasm doesn't waver for our heroes. Master of Ceremony, Colonel Bancroft McIntrick, United States Marine, retired. Live music by Randy McDonald. Everybody will enjoy free food, art, resources, fun for everyone. Every military veteran and first responder will be honored with a service medallion and a goodie bag. Most importantly, events like this and other veteran events and what you guys did today for Joseph Szczesinski gives us all a renewed sense of pride and dignity and purpose. And we appreciate you and the whole community that comes out and supports us. Thank you. Ormond Strong out.
Thank you. Emily Foss, followed by Larry Wesley.
Hello, my name's Emily, and this is my first time speaking at a county council meeting. My pastor and some members of my church, as well as the families at my preschool, are asking me to come here today to speak about a traffic issue that we have in front of our business. So our preschool is a nonprofit. It has about 100-some families that attend the preschool. So on any given day, parents are dropping off and picking up, and there's no left turn lane into our preschool. So it's a two-lane road. And I just wanted to bring your attention to some statistics about left turn lanes and how important they are. So in Volusia County, over the last year, there's been 3,127 crashes. Now, while we may not have had a fatal accident at our particular non-intersection or no-turn lane, there have been a lot of close calls over the years. And there's been a 39% increase in the state of Florida from 2013 to 2023 in total crash fatalities here in the state of Florida. And because many of our parents are constantly voicing a concern that they feel unsafe with children in the vehicle turning into our preschool, I'm asking that when you guys start your project to widen Taylor Road, that you would consider putting a left-hand turn lane in front of our preschool and church to serve our families on a daily basis. And I also have some statistics from the Federal Highway Administration that exclusive turning lanes for vehicles remove stopped vehicles from through traffic. Left turn lanes at intersections substantially reduce rear-end crashes. So this is something that we're hoping to provide for a lot of the families in our community. And I also just want to say, on a personal note, that I've been working at this particular preschool for 18 years now. And I have personally witnessed some of these close calls myself, and that it will definitely have a significant impact on our families, an impact on what preschool they choose for their children should they not want to make that left turn into the parking lot, or if they are fearful of having those close calls happen to them or their loved ones. So I ask you to consider adding that to the expansion of Taylor Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Larry Wesley. I'll add, as you, oh, I don't have to tell him then. Okay. The clock above my head is on. Can you see it?
Yeah, okay, it's running. Larry Wesley, 39th Andrew Circle, New Smyrna Beach. And I'm involved with Our Savior's Lutheran Church as well. Emily did a great job in presenting what we're trying to get here. And I don't want to see what happened on Grand, uh, let's see, was it Grand Avenue out there in Deland, where a grandmother and about, what, three children got killed because there was no proactive thing done as far as turning lane or, "Thank God you came up with a circle." That's a beautiful idea. Anyway, I talked with the previous pastor and Mayor Burnett and Minnie, his assistant, and Danny Robbins and Jake Johansson's aware. I think Matt probably, you guys talk. I call you the Three Musketeers. You know, Johansson, Robbins, and Reinhardt, you know? But anyway, we need that turning zone. These children, this is precious cargo coming to this preschool. We don't need it for the church. We need it for the preschool. Those parents coming in about 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, dropping off kids. If you can't put a turning lane, you can at least put a... Got a minute left. All right, you can at least put a sign. School zone. Flashing light. Maybe some paint down. That signifies a school zone. They're going through there right now at over 55 miles per hour. And I talked to Mayor Burnett. He said, when there's an accident there, there was an accident. Sue Carr, she was our church secretary. She has, is still under litigation right now. A rear end pushed her into the oncoming traffic. And my pastor, Dobberstein, that's up in Wisconsin right now, told me that it's still under litigation. And now you people are aware of the problem? Let's be proactive here. Danny's on top of it. He's talked to the engineers, talked to the Florida transportation people. And it's time to, you know, I'm throwing you a bonus here. It's an election year. Do something. Get it done before, you know, September school year starts. I think they're practicing graduation right now. School's almost over, but you can have this ready. Easy. If you put a little effort into it, get it over by, you know, next school year, September. If you give me the equipment, I'll do it myself. You know what I mean? It's not that hard, people. Let's get her done. Yeah. Seven, six, five. Come on, people. Help us out here. I don't want to see a disaster.
The reason I told Mr. Wesley that the clock was running above my head because it had not been. But just in case you come up and speak and the clock goes off, it's still on, on the monitor in front of you. But it seems like the clock above me is working now? Okay. John Keister.
Thank you, sir. John Keister, District 3. I spoke to y'all some time back about, and I was tortured in the Volusia County Jail over here in Maine on February 5th and 6th of 2021 for not wearing a rag over my face. Okay, I'm a grown man, and I don't force anybody to do anything. And no one has a right to force a rag over my face or an injection in my body. All right? And here we are, about three years in, and I'm not hearing any talk about it in our government. Nobody seems to want to talk about it. I'll debate anybody, anytime, anywhere, and I want to debate any leader in our government who says they have a right to put a rag over my face or any authority to put a rag over my face. Because you don't, and they don't. For a country, people talking about democracy that don't understand what democracy is, I will debate anyone on this planet on democracy. The world does not understand democracy. There's no such thing as an earthly democracy. Democracy is a spirit of cooperation. It's the spirit that taught men how to toss a coin head or tails because that's fair and it's equal. And democracy is always fair and equal. Here's, I'll give you a quick explanation. I challenge anyone. A definition of democracy. Try to get someone to define democracy. Try to get someone to define democracy. Here's the definition. Democracy is 100% voluntary, equal, and fair agreement. The moment you get outside of that, you're no longer in a democracy. You're in something else. You might be in a democratic process. And that's what, for instance, when you toss a coin, heads or tails, you're in a democratic process. That's what voting is. Voting was invented by democracy, but it is not democracy. Voting is democratic. It is the process that democracy acts in, which parliamentary procedure is democratic. It is the process that democracy operates by. America is not a democracy. We are a representative republic where democracy can take place, but it's never... It's not mandated by law. Democracy can never be mandated by any law. And it's not a physical thing. It's that understanding that we're equals, the kind of equality that takes place when you, for instance, toss a coin, even though we all have different money and we're different heights and different physical abilities. Let me agree, is my time up?
Thank you, yes, sir.
I would love to give a PowerPoint sometime on democracy on this council.
Okay, that brings... Thank you. That brings us to item one, the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve by Vice Chair Kent. Is there a second?
Second, Johansson.
Second by Jake Johansson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda is approved, six to zero. Which brings us to the presentation that we had, the proclamation. I would need a motion and a second to approve the proclamation that was... A motion to approve by...
I think, Johansson.
Matt Reinhardt, and the second was by Representative Johansson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the proclamation is approved, six to zero. That brings us to item three, the consent agenda. Does any council member have an item they would like to pull for a comment or for a vote? Danny Robbins?
Chair, item F, please.
Say that again, item F?
F, yeah.
Okay. And Councilman Reinhardt? Okay, Matt Reinhardt is the same, item F.
Chairman, motion to approve the consent agenda absent item F.
Second, Johansson.
It could be with item F, it's just for comment.
Oh, I didn't hear if it was for comment. I didn't hear that. Do you want to pull for a vote or for comment?
For a vote. I just want to discuss, maybe tweak it a little bit.
Oh, okay. Okay, so approve consent agenda absent item F.
Second, Johansson.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, all except for item F by Vice Chair Kent, and the second was by Councilman Johansson. All in favor of the balance of the agenda item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six to zero, and we will move to item F.
George, here goes your perfect record.
Well, the pressure's relieved. We'll start a new streak starting next week.
And this is an item on the Award of Funding for Water and Swim Safety Programs.
Chairman, if I may, I read over and reviewed everything. Just want to bring a couple suggestions forward, I think, for maybe some checks and balances. Brad, can I bend your ear for just a minute? I was looking at some of the verbiage, Brad, in here when it came to the award and funding of the water and swim safety programs. Thank you, guys, first and foremost, for bringing this back to us and giving us some options here. I like the program. Is it possible that we can... How can we make sure that the YMCA's and the city of Daytona Beach, where that money stays with this program and kind of doesn't get lost in the mix? Do we have a plan on how to make sure that's earmarked with some of these organizations?
So, it's a cost reimbursable grant, just like many that we do. So, they have to prove that they've had expenditures for this program in order to get our money. We just don't give them a lump sum.
Okay, and great, that sort of answers that. I see also, too, that it limits this funding to go towards, I guess, folks with pools. I would like to add some verbiage in there. You know, the number one, is that correct?
No, sir. So, the swim lessons, you do not have to have a pool, but a component of this are alarms for folks. And they have to have a pool in order to get one of those alarms that we provide as well.
I would like to expand that because obviously not everybody has a pool. But they do have a lot of... There's a lot of canals in Volusia County, ponds, drainage, or retention pond, farm pond on their property. Can we open that up to those folks as well and not just limit that, you know?
Absolutely. We need to look to make sure that they'll work in those larger bodies of water. We don't want to give folks something that won't work, but yes.
Obviously, with the pool sensor, yeah, I get it. But I'm talking about for like the window sensors and the door sensors.
Yes, sir.
Sounds good. That's all I have, and I'll make a motion to approve if there's nothing else.
Okay. So far, we have a motion to approve item F by Representative Robbins, and the second was from Representative Reinhardt. And Matt?
Yeah, just real quick, thank you for that, by the way. I didn't think outside that, that was a good idea. I was actually pulling it for discussion. We had started this conversation with the city of Daytona when they first were made aware of this, and they're extremely... They were hard at work right away on it. So, I know Commissioner Cantu was very active in that. So, they're very appreciative of the fact, and I would like to see it where they have the opportunity to pursue this again. 275 kids just in Daytona will get those types of lessons. That's 275 potential lives that could be saved as a result of it. So, my thanks to y'all for doing that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kent?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm excited about this. This is the right thing to do. When Wyatt was able to start crawling, we put him in infant swim research. I watched it work firsthand, absolutely incredible for kids that can't even walk but know how to roll over and float. And living near any body of water, I would recommend that every parent get their child swim lessons or infant swim research. Dr. Burball, I do have a question for you on this because $20,000 to the YMCA, and they're going to provide swim lessons to 200 children throughout Volusia County. Now, the city of Daytona Beach, $20,000, and they're going to provide swim lessons for 275 students. Why can Daytona Beach do it better than the YMCA? And have we spoken to the YMCA and said, "Hey, Daytona's giving us 75 more lessons here for students. We want you to step up and provide the same." You're getting the same amount of money. I think it's a healthy conversation that's valid. I don't think it's irrational. I think it's a reasonable question to ask, and if you don't ask, you won't know.
Yes, so I thought your question was going to be, "Do you have to be a YMCA member?" Because we made sure that was not the case to access...
Thank you for clarifying that because that was part two.
Okay. The Daytona one is supplemented by their city. So, they're being supplemented by other government funds for this, whereas the YMCA is not. But there's a sliding scale. So, the YMCA gave us a number. They may be able to serve more based on that sliding scale of income, just like they use for their membership. It all depends on if you have someone at the lower end or the higher end.
So, I saw where the YMCA, you know, it could be free or it could be discounted. For Daytona Beach, is it free or is it the same sliding scale?
It's income-eligible, so there's an income threshold.
And is that an income threshold with the YMCA as well?
Yes.
That sliding scale? I'm going to vote for this. I'm going to approve it because if this amount of money saved one little baby, it's worth it. But I want... I'm hopeful that the conversation, and maybe another council member will speak up as well, is that if Daytona's doing 275, I want to see YMCA and/or put in the question mark, any other group, Orman Beach, New Smyrna, Port Orange, I don't care, do it as well as Daytona's doing it.
Your point is well taken. This is the first time we've done this, RFB, and I think it aligns with George's leadership and your goals to be nimble when we see an issue in the community, but also protect the public trust, and your point's well taken. When we put it out for bid next time, we'll make sure that there's kind of a uniform. This is what you're getting for each unit.
Sure, and, you know, publicly, I just want to publicly thank Councilman Robbins because he spearheaded this and brought this up, was it six months ago, eight months ago, something like that? It was something. It's something like that. And this is positive for kids in the community. And I'm really pleased that you brought up not... You don't just have to have a pool because there are many that live near a pond or a canal or a ditch. And when you see those things on the news or read about it, it's absolutely brutal.
I will say as well, the state saw the need for this, and they've started a $500,000 pilot program that's similar. And I've asked our health department director how we can access some of that funds going forward so, you know, we can leverage our funds or not use our funds in the future.
I'm pleased to hear that, and since I still have the floor, since no one else has jumped in yet and the chair hasn't unrecognized me. And I'm pleased that the state... I didn't know that. I'm pleased that the state is offering up a half a million dollars. I mean, here we are in Volusia County, and we're looking at $73,000. So, it might be something that Mr. Booker, if he's in the House, George, he can tap into, and something that we can talk to our delegation going to Tallahassee. And, you know, statewide, a half a million dollars. I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Johansson?
Thank you, sir. Just to get clarity, the window alarms are only for the windows that give access to the pool, correct?
I'm looking to a professional...
Building code?
Please, Carmen.
It's not for all windows in the house?
So, those alarms, they come in packages of four, and so, it will be a package that'll be given to a house. We won't determine... We will not be installing the alarms on each individual house.
If I come to the county and say, "I have 16 windows," are you going to give 16-door alarms, window alarms out?
Probably be one package for a household, but we can discuss.
And the request from Councilman Robbins to add the canals and the ponds, that's for the water intrusion alarm only?
Correct. That restriction was just for the water intrusion alarm, which is for a pool. But it might be able to be used on other bodies of water.
Right, but not the window. What I'm trying to do is prevent somebody from saying, "I got 16 windows," because if a kid can get out a back window and go to a pond, the kid can get out a front window and go to the pond. According to the building code, a kid can't get out of the front window technically and go into your pool because you either have to have a fence or some other way not to get in it. So, those things are protected. We don't necessarily protect ponds and canals with fences, according to the building code. So, what I don't want is for five people to come up and set their house up for success at the expense of other people that need it. So, I want to make sure that we don't do something great here that makes us inefficient in the future.
Our goal would be to help as many residents as possible. This is a supplemental program, it's not to retrofit your whole house.
Right, yep. I know what it's intended for. And I love the program, like many other programs we do at the county. But keep in mind, as we talk about other programs, this is the government doing something that maybe a mom and dad should be doing. Having said that, I support 100%, thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Award of Funding for Water and Swim Safety Programs with an expenditure of $73,409. Is there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries six to zero. Thank you. And that brings us to item four. We do have members of the public who want to participate in this. Item four, I asked to be... To have this placed on the agenda. It concerns the legend Beach Parade in Ponce Inlet, which hopefully all of you are aware of. It's a very, very popular parade. It happens once a year outside of turtle season. And it is so popular that many residents and visitors that go down to view the parade are not able to find a parking spot. There's very limited parking in Ponce Inlet. So, I'm asking the council, what I hope to get to today is we can't take a vote and just approve to allow cars to park during the parade. It's got to go through several steps. And so, I am asking the council to make a motion for staff to proceed to review this potential change and return the matter to the council so that we can be well ahead of the 2015 legislative session because it has to go to the state legislature as well. It did before to even allow the parade. So, this doesn't require you to vote on the final decision. It brings us the information needed to make an informed decision. At the same time, we have received a letter from the mayor of Ponce Inlet, very timely. We also have members of the Ponce Inlet City Commission here that will speak. She has offered... The council has offered to seek parking off of the beach through their own city-owned property and through private businesses. I think we should proceed with that as well and let the city see if they can lock that in. However, I would like to do both simultaneously. I think we still need to move ahead and be ready for the legislative session because the benefit to our residents, if the county does it, is that it's locked in. If it's improved, if it's approved down the road and we're allowed to have parking, not driving, although you have to drive to the parking place, but to allow people to go down the Beach Street approach, turn left, go north, and park, they know that they can do that every year. If it's private businesses providing parking, we don't know if that's going to continue from year to year. One year it might be in place, the next year they might choose to not do it for whatever reason. So, I believe that we should approve or pursue both of them. And all of the details after that, we... The council would decide if the FWC says it does not adversely affect our incidental take permit, which this shouldn't because it's outside of turtle season, it's not nighttime driving, and it's not driving all up and down the beach, it's turning to park and so that everyone in Volusia County and our visitors can enjoy the parade. So, that's why it's on the agenda so that we could discuss it and decide if we would like to start the process, which will take some time. Attorney Dyer, how... We don't know yet when there... We know when the legislation will start. We don't know when there... We would be required to inform this of this meeting. We would have to have public meetings or inform this of this ordinance.
Right, it would... The Volusia County delegation meeting in anticipation of the 2025 legislative session, the date of that has not yet been set, as you said. So, we would... If council wishes to proceed with this, anytime we have these beach issues, we have four silos of issues, which we address in the agenda item. The first is the chairs of our... And the first is the chairs were referencing is seeking a special law to allow parking on an area that is currently designated as non-driving. Council did that previously for the purpose of the reenactment of the historic beach event, beach race. The other silo is the federal permits the chair also referenced. Your staff could get with the federal government, the, to find out if they would treat changes to the permit as a minor or major amendment. A minor amendment is what they accepted last time for this event. If it's a major amendment, there's some, that is a bigger deal, when you talk about and report back to you with information. The third silo is the issue of customary use. Up and down the beach, people's property, lawn varies on how eastward or seaward that goes. So the public's use of many parts of the beach is actually occurring on private property. We would need to review that as well, because there's certain elements that we have to achieve in order to have customer use, which, in other words, allow the public to use this property that is ordinarily private property without compensation. And the last issue, which doesn't apply in every case, is are there any contractual commitments or issues that we must resolve?
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the attorney? Any questions at all? Yeah. Okay. I'll let the, the people from the public, let's, let's start with the city of Ponce Inlet that are here. I know that Mayor Peritzky is out of town. So Michael Dishar, the city, Ponce Inlet city manager.
Thank you, honored members of the council and county staff. In your packet, you have a letter from the mayor, Mayor Peritzky. She sends her address that she couldn't make it here today. You, Mr. Chair Brower, you already covered a lot of the points in the letter, but I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights. Yeah, there is some concern within the town about the, the issues that may be raised if this process goes forward. What we wanted to offer instead is to work with our private property owners, our commercial properties, and see if we can get some of them to offer, you know, parking space for this event. The town also has up to 160 spaces of its own that can be used for this purpose. In total, there's 875 spaces that could potentially be used for this to accommodate parking in the town. And that's in addition to the 345 that are already being used for visitors and for staging for this event. It would be really helpful to us if you had a certain amount of parking or number of spaces in mind, that we could work to, to secure that number. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. And Councilman White is also here as well.
Okay. Thank you. We'll see how it proceeds. Councilman White?
Skip White, Ponce Inlet Town Council. Good afternoon, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this important issue, the Legends Parade. Held annually at historic Norturn, and along the stretch of our beautiful beaches, is one of the most popular events we host each year. We get visitors from all over the U.S. as we commemorate racing's history right here in Ponce Inlet. The Legends Parade is another example of excellent cooperation and coordination between Volusia County and Ponce Inlet Town Council. We value our partnership with the county, and as always, we look forward to working with you on all important matters that come before us. Based on my research, the current proposal under the consideration would potentially violate the following, under the ITP that is supported by the Habitat Conservation Plan. Number one, a Ponce Inlet designation for natural beach management area. See page 110, 111 of the Habitat Conservation Plan. Number two, the vehicle access restriction for the natural beach management area. See page 113, table 30 of the HCP. Number three, vehicle restrictions for natural beach management area under special events. See page 114, page table 30 of the HCP, and item J on 115. These are just a few of the issues that would require a substantial amount of staff time, legal research, and amendments to the state law before additional beach parking would become available. The Florida Legislative Session does not begin until March 4th, 2025, one month after this event. I've provided supporting documents for your review from the HCP. In addition, the sand replacement project, which should be underway during this time of the event takes place, may present challenges in terms of practicality. Amendments to the state law, the Habitat Conservation Plan, and the incidental take permit could bog down legal and legislative red tape. For now, the good news, in recognition of needing additional parking, our local Ponce Inlet business community has come together to support this event we all look forward to. I've spoken with several business owners who express a willingness to allow visiting race fans to park on their properties, alleviating the shortage of parking spots that gave rise to the chairman's concerns. With your permission, I'd like the opportunity to submit with you a formal plan that will achieve this objective in time for next year's event, and save county staff a great deal of time, money, and effort. I'll be willing to organize this, formalize this, and bring this back to you in an upcoming meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Look forward to hearing from the proposal. Questions?
Okay. Thank you very much. We, don't go away.
Okay.
We usually don't allow questions to the public coming in, but this is unusual. We have two, two members of the, of the Ponce Inlet council and staff here. So if, if anyone does have a question for them, Councilman Reinhardt, I believe does.
How many, these locations that you're talking about that are willing to support this, they've been in business for a long time, correct?
Right. There are actually some business owners, but also private landowners.
Private landowners.
And if, I can quickly tell you, Jerry's Pizza, which is actually across from the off-street parking, Frankie has agreed to allow us to use the parking lot. But just to the west of that is about a two-acre field that actually is owned by Bobby Blake. Bobby's a friend of mine.
Bobby's been in there for a while.
Bobby has committed to doing that. The other issue we, other opportunity we have is actually over at Winter Haven Park, across the street, 711, Mr. Singh. There's actually about two and a half acres of vacant land behind the 711, which I've already contacted both those individuals, friends of mine. They've agreed to allow us to use that parking. We utilize that parking a lot in Ponce Inlet, as we always have our events, our Christmas parade and things like that. So you're looking at a little bit over four acres of open field that we can utilize if need be.
Mm-hmm.
We've never been in this position before. It continues to grow, which is wonderful. We don't want to see this parade go away. The town sponsors the parade.
Those sponsors you referred to, were they utilized last year?
No, they were not.
So I will say, I was at the Legends Parade this, this past year. I commend your law enforcement as well, which was entirely handled by the town of Ponce Inlet. They handled all of it. There was no sheriff's office that I saw. It was strictly done by the town of Ponce Inlet, and they did a phenomenal job. It seemed seamless, in and out. And there's only so many ways to come into Ponce Inlet, and only so many ways to exit it. So, one. That being said, I commend with the, the fact that it was handled in the manner in which it was. Now you're going to make more parking available as well?
Yes.
Okay. You brought up a good point, which was what I was going to bring up before. When this Legends Parade happens, two things. Number one, it's before the state legislature convenes.
Yes.
Number two, we don't even know who, at this point, who that legislator is. That's, that's essentially, it's not a vacancy, but it is a vacancy. Number three, it's right at the heart of the sand renourishment when we go to dredge Rattlesnake Island and that sand placement that we, Ms. Fentress did a phenomenal job, as did the town of Ponce Inlet, to secure those 50 easements in order to, to maintain and stockpile that sand. A lot of people had asked the question, when they stockpile the sand, is it going to be one big pile of sand? No. So there's going to be trucks hauling it on. So you're going to have that truck activity at the same time?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'll, I'll wait to hear more, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All good questions. I was going to ask you as well, have we used those parking places in the past? You said no.
No, we have not.
And, which is my concern. We've, we've had, parking has been an issue. And this is not a complaint. This parade runs like clockwork every year. It's really well done. It's one of the reasons it's so popular. People come from all over the county, outside of the county, to see this. There have been people that couldn't find a parking place, even though, like Councilman Reinhardt says, there's only, well, there's two ways. You can, you can come along the river or along the ocean to get in Ponce Inlet. I took my family one year, and we, we never could find a place to park. We talked to law enforcement, and there wasn't any place. So we turned around and went to a restaurant on the river closer to Port Orange. I forget the name of it.
Hidden Treasures.
Who?
Hidden Treasures.
I don't think. Is there another one?
Boondocks.
Boondocks.
Okay.
Sat there, had a great lunch, and talked with all the people that were in there that had the same thing happen. They went to the parade, couldn't get in. Not, not everybody. I didn't talk to everybody in the restaurant, but... So that's the purpose of bringing it up, is to allow more people to enjoy an incredible thing. What my concern, I think we should absolutely proceed with having the city seeing what you can do to provide more parking. What I'm proposing wouldn't be in time anyway for this year.
That's correct.
For all the things that are going, but, so it, it provides for the future, because things change.
And Chair, can I make one comment?
You may.
You know, Norturn comes to the town council every year looking for support. We have new owners at Norturn, which I think they've been there for about three years now. It's a lot of work for them to put this Legends Parade on. And we try to support them and help them as much as we can. But the feedback that we're getting from the community about opening up the driving beach is so negative. I don't want to see them stop this and just go away. And that's how serious this thing has become, and that's why we're here today.
You'd...
We want it to continue going, but if Norturn gets enough, enough pressure from the residents, the local residents, they'll just stop doing the parade. And they're the ones that actually put it on. And I don't want to see us to go through that if we can have alternatives and not go through this process.
Yeah, I don't either. That would be a shame if...
For all of us.
If the residents said no to everybody else in, in Volusia County. My, you know, you mentioned numerous concerns about the ITP. We, we went through all of that when we first established the parade and had to go to the Florida Legislature and found that it, it wasn't quite as daunting as some people might have expected. There's, there's a, I'm not saying that it was entered here, but there's always been that fear factor from some in the public that if you ask for anything with the ITP, it's all going to go away. And, and that wasn't the case.
Yeah. One other point on that, if I could, Chairman. You know, if you go and look under special events, there's very strict rules on special events. And the reason that the cars were allowed on there is they have to go through individual training before they're allowed on the beach. And it plainly states on, on table 30, and again, I have copies for everyone over here. It plainly states on there that special events, they have to go through training. And if you look over on ta, page 30 also, the public has no access ever, period, to, to this driving on this, the private beach, and, I'm sorry, the natural beach management area. So if you look at the documentation that I supplied to you guys, it's, it's, it's pretty cut and dry. So I don't think that we'll have our, our trainer out there training each resident that wants to drive on the beach. And it stipulates that in the rules.
And, and we wouldn't need to. We could handle it the same way we handle beach driving in, in the rest of Volusia County, where you have somebody in a, in a toll booth telling you to turn on your lights, do this. It takes a few seconds, and then we could have, that could be a volunteer. We could even have volunteers, just like we do at the fairgrounds, directing the traffic, showing you where you, to, where you were supposed to park. And you asked how much. If we had a, a mile of, of beach to allow parking, stopped it there at 12 feet apart, we could have 800, 880 cars double parked. And when the parade goes on, it's a wide beach, and that, that could be permitted. So I absolutely think we need to proceed with what, what the city has offered to do. I'm a little concerned or disappointed that it hasn't been offered before, but sometimes, the parade has grown. Every year, it gets more popular and more people come. So that's, that could be the reason for that. Matt Reinhardt.
Chair, one quick question. The special event, because, and forgive me, because I wasn't on council back then, was that, did that include parking, or just the route of the vehicles to go onto the beach?
That was just the route of the vehicles going on the beach.
So it did not, that, that special event that we've done or that we have passed is just for the route of vehicles to go, not parking?
That's correct. And they have to be trained on exactly where to drive on the beach. And that's, it's not just, you make a left, you turn your lights on, you roll your window down. They have to be driving on the wet sand from the highest tide of that morning, 2:00 after the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. They have to be driving on the wet sand.
On the wet sand. And, you know, with so many things that have been brought up, with what you said about the special training, the fact that the special event that we got an approval for, the Legends Parade, from this point forward, without negatively affecting the incidental take permit, the fact that Ponce Inlet is willing to go out and, and secure that parking, and that's something that you can do every year, because they come to you for that assistance anyways.
Correct.
That being said, I, I'm a no on this, as far as us seeing it any further. So I know there's no motion. I'm just making a point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. To the town council of Ponce Inlet, I applaud you all for coming with a solution. You know, it's rare. A lot of times, you know, people just present a problem, but they don't, they don't present the solution. And I thank you for doing that. Town Councilmember White, you, you mentioned briefly driving on this private beach, and I went, ooh, when I heard it.
That was a misstep.
I know it was. No, I know it was, but it didn't get past me.
Right. That's fine.
And, and that is my concern, is that, is that what the town of Ponce Inlet thinks? Is this their private beach? And how dare anybody think that they're going to access it?
Not even close. And, and let me address that one piece. And you and I've had the discussion before. A lot of the property owners actually physically own to the mean high-tide line, which is based on a 10-year average. And our attorney addressed it earlier. Majority of the property that you're looking at right now is all the way into the mean high-tide line. So we do not, and I know it's, you know, the ITP and control the sand. That comment was not made that we think it's our beach, because we don't. All we're trying to do is protect the environment that's there and not confuse people that are coming on there right now. We're having a ton of issues all across Volusia County of managing the rules and regulations, the codes and ordinances that we are putting into place right now. This just adds more to it.
Yeah. I appreciate you, you know, clarifying that. And I'll just say briefly, on the comment of the ownership to the mean high-tide water line, I, I had a, a meeting back in 2005, 2004, with a group that was trying to do high-rises in Ormond Beach. They didn't like my answer, and they told me in that private meeting, looked right at me and said, "Mr. Kent, who do you think owns that property behind my hotel?" And I said, "The people own that property." He let me know real quick. "I own that property, and I pay the taxes on that." And I told him, "And you can keep the people off of that beach?" And he said, "No, I, I can't, I can't do that." But he wanted me to know he owns it and he pays the taxes on it. And it made, made the hair on the back of my neck stand up back then.
Right.
Because, you know, if there's, if there's one thing I want to make sure I convey, because I, I started this conversation, and I'm going to end it with, "Thank you for coming with a solution", is, is that that beach is not private. That beach is a public beach, and it's for anybody to access. So, thanks.
And the way it was explained to me from the state is, yes, you own the land to the mean high-tide line, but we have jurisdiction over the sand. And that's, that's the statement.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kent, that, I'm glad you brought that up. It's troubling to me. It was troubling when I heard... It was troubling when I heard Mike Dyer say it, and, and you talk about the private beach and people not being able to drive on, I think the attorney said, private property. It's a public beach. It's always been a public beach. The public has been greatly restricted from using that beach. It's been established for decades that vehicular traffic is public asset, access. I'm reading from a letter from the county attorney from 2022. It said, "The special local law should be amended to expand the allowable forms of vehicular traffic, including public parking as an exception to this statute." The previous council that approved the parade didn't take that up. I just think that we should, so that in the future, if things change, the, the public's ability to participate in this parade doesn't go away. I'm, I really appreciate the offer that the city is making, that you'll go to the private residence, private businesses, but we won't always be able to depend on that. So, Vice Chair Kent.
Yeah, Chairman, and I appreciate everything you're saying, and you may not agree with this, and that's okay. Because, you know, you brought this up, and you have that right. You're our chairman. And part of the rights of a chairman is you can put things on the agenda. When I first got elected, I read this thing frontwards and backwards to see how to get things on the agenda. Maybe, and like I said, maybe you don't go along with this, and that's fine, but the town of Ponce Inlet has come to us with a solution. Why cross that bridge and get, get stuck in it if, if this solves the problem? If the problem comes up again and it's not solved, why don't we jump feet first at that point and, and tackle it then? I think, I don't know, but I think this might solve the problem. I commend, again, the town for going almost door to door to talk to these business owners. You know, listen, it's good for business in Ponce Inlet. You know, listen, Ponce Inlet needs to make sure you all say, our doors are open, we want you down here, come and spend your money, we're one of a kind. Nope, I've seen, found no place in, in, anywhere in the world with a town and a beach and access to the river and an inlet like you all have. It's, it's a gem. And your business owners deserve every bit that they can get. So I'm just saying, maybe this fixes it. If it doesn't, then lead us down the way to fix it.
Okay. Councilman Robbins wants to speak. I'll just answer that real quick. Let's do what the city wants to do. The reason I think that we should also pursue this is because it's a long process. And we would find out fairly quickly if FWC says this is a major or a minor, and no, if we should pursue it at all. This doesn't, what I'm asking, doesn't require us to say, okay, it's done. It just takes that next step. Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chairman. Guys, I think we're, we're getting into debate. Just, just an observation. We're not there yet. I'd like to hear from the rest of the public. Thank you. Ponce Inlet, I have nothing for you guys.
City Manager, did, I thought I heard you say you would like to say something.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I did, I appreciate your, your comment about having certainty. And so that's where the, the town's properties at least could come in. So there are potentially 160 spaces that are not being used that are owned by the town for that purpose.
Thank you very much. Mike Dennis, I believe, was the last public speaker.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mike Dennis, 177 Blue Heron Lake Circle, Ormond Beach, Florida. I think it's great that the city, you know, how often do you get a problem and a possible solution in the same thing? But if I'm driving down there and my choice is to park in Jerry's Italian Grill parking lot and lug my chairs and my cooler to walk over to the beach, because I want to hear that thump, 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 thump on my shirt and, you know, feel the vibration, that Flathead V8. Now, back in my day, Flathead V8s were all over the place. I was born in '47. So a lot of those cars are older than me, you know, probably older than some of you. All of them will be. But anyway. One of the things about the ITP is St. Johns County has a similar ITP. And guess what? The Fourth of July, untrained drivers can go park on the beach at night in turtle season. Let me repeat that. Untrained drivers can park at night on the beach during turtle season for the Fourth of July celebration. So the ITP is not this big clamshell that's restricting us. And I'll email you, all of you, the, the ITP and the page number that has that. But anyway, I think it's, maybe we can't make the 25 legislature, but boy, we should be looking at it for 26 and beyond because part of their parking places are empty lots. How long does the empty lot last on the beach? You know, unfortunately, sometimes a long time, but really, you're at the whim of, of the owner and developer. So I think you need to look for a longer-term solution while you look at a, a short-term solution. And, you know, it's great that you got the problem and the solution, and maybe even a, a long-term solution to, to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's the end of public comment on this item. Vice Chair Kent.
I just want to ask the elected Mr. White one more question. Could you come up, please? I like your sense to solving problems. What's the furthest distance on these possible four acres to get from those lots to the event? Rough guesstimate.
300 yards, possibly.
Okay.
You know, 300, 300 yards.
Would the, would the town, I know you can't speak for your entire town, but would maybe you be willing to talk to your town about maybe Ponce Inlet for that event, hiring out a shuttle service during that event to help solve this?
And let me make a comment about that.
Sure.
You know, and again, the way the parade comes down, it comes down South Atlantic. So if you step right outside Jerry's Pizza or the vacant land I'm talking about, you catch the cars coming down the road, and then if you walk across the beach to the, the public parking on the beach, you catch them again. So there's not a lot to shuttle, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Makes a ton of sense.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? And we need a, a motion and a second to do one of three things, to allow the city of Ponce Inlet to save this, to proceed with their plan to create more parking, one of two things. Or certainly to allow them to do that and start this long process so that we're protected for the future. Michael Dyer.
Sure. Just to clarify, the town's proposal on how they wish to handle, that would not require approval of the county at all. That would be a town decision.
Okay.
For the off, for the additional parking.
Yeah, I just thought it would be nice to get a sense of the council, that they wanted to do that. Vice Chair Kent.
Thank you. Chairman, I just want to tell you and the council and those listening publicly, I applaud your efforts on beach access and vehicular driving on the beach. I'm, I'm there, I think, with you nine out of 10 times, if not 10 out of 10. I'm not going to make a motion on this, and I'm going to tell you why, even though I applaud your efforts with it. I want to give Ponce Inlet an opportunity to fix this. And if, if it doesn't fix it, then I will help lead the charge to say, hey, council, this didn't work. Let's, um, let's do Chairman Brower's idea. And it, you know, it might set us back a little longer. But from what I've heard today, I feel like this is a common sense approach to solving this and hopefully making this event even better. I just wanted you to know why I wasn't going to make the motion for it, even though I applaud your efforts.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Dempsey.
Yeah, I kind of, same thing as, as my cohort here. Basically, I always prefer to let the local government deal with something. I don't think these guys want somebody from the land telling them how to run their business over beachside. So I'm kind of the same way. I think it's great that we're trying to do it personally. I think beach driving is awesome. But I'm a the land guy, so I'd rather let the locals deal with their local issues. And that's the only reason why I'm not going to make a motion along with Troy. All right, thanks, Jeff.
Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm, I'm the same, I'm a big home rule guy. And the home rule goes to the county being able to tell the city what to do. If you have a solution which you proposed, I'd like to, I'd like to see you successful on that.
I appreciate your efforts as well to solve this. For, for me, the home rule is that the beach is the county's home rule. It's our responsibility, and we're supposed to, to do this. So I was really hopeful that we would, that you would move ahead and find additional parking so that people aren't turned away, that the county would move ahead so that that was locked in for future generations. Vice Chair Troy Kent.
Just before this is done, Town Member White, I just wanted to publicly say, it meant a tremendous amount to me with my decision today. You showed up. You were, you were here. Not just your manager, but you were here. Your mayor couldn't be here, but you showed up. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we can all see where this is going. I'll ask one more time for a motion. And without a motion, there's no, there's no need for me to hand off the gavel, because there won't be a second to the motion. So Ponce Inlet, it's in your hands. We're turning it over to you and asking you to, to find additional parking and, and manage this parade on, on the public speech. All right, that's item four. Thank you both for, for coming in, the town manager. That brings us to item five, which is another beach access issue. And I'll start with that in just a moment. We do have numerous members of the public that want to speak to this. This, this item comes to me, I think you'll hear this as we go along, but it comes to me from the public and specifically from the Main Street Merchants Association, who came and asked for help in restoring the crowds of people to this very core part of our beach between the Boardwalk and East ISB, which was closed about 22 years ago. When that was closed, that whole area died. It had nothing to do with parking. And this is not about adding parking to the beach. It's about making this section of beach a destination again, which it was before. It attracted locals from all over the county. It attracted out-of-towners. It was a popular part of the beach. It was not seedy. It was not, you know, there was people of all ages there. However, since we remove vehicular access on the beach, we've lost, I don't know what the percentage is, maybe one of the merchants will tell us, but we've lost a lot of what used to be mom-and-pop owners of, of establishments up and down that section of beach. So there's many storefronts that are empty. There's restaurants that have gone out of business. The, the Boardwalk is empty. Do you have those pictures? Can you just put a few pictures up for me? And I'll tell you, this is the Boardwalk. This was last week. I went to a graduation at the Ocean Center, walked down to the beach to see what the crowd was on the Boardwalk. That's the crowd. Next photo, please. This is the entrance, the very iconic entrance from Main Street, this beautiful arch that Daytona Beach is investing a lot of money in to, to restore. Welcome to the world's most famous beach. And then there might as well be a sign that says, do not enter. It's blocked off. You can't use it. While I'm standing there, one of the few remaining business owners from the Boardwalk came to me and said, can you, he asked me if I was Jeff. I said I was. Exchanged pleasant. He said, can you help me restore this area? My business is not what it used to be. He is a long-term business holder there, and he's seen changes. Next slide, please. So one of the business owners came to me in person there. I've been talking to business owners, owners for several months when they came to me and said, can you please help us? So it was from the association meeting. This is the beach in front of it. There's no people on the beach, very, very few. There's chairs and umbrellas anticipating, but the people aren't there. Next slide. Same thing. Was there another picture? Was that the last one? Pardon me?
I believe you only sent four.
Yes, okay. I just wasn't counting. So that's the state of our beach since we decided to do this. Again, just like in the last item, I'm not asking for a vote to put cars back on the beach. I'm asking for a vote to start the process in a timely manner so that we'll be ahead of the March 4th, 2025 legislative, legislative session. This does not in any way interfere with the city of Daytona Beach's redevelopment areas of the Ocean Walk, the Hilton, or the Plaza. It's not interfering with that. It doesn't go that far north. What it would do is to make this section of beach from East ISB to the Boardwalk the destination once again that it was before. This is a core section of our beach that was once thriving and a favorite destination for the people that we represent, our local representatives, and tourists alike. At the time, when you could get to the beach there, it, again, it was not seedy nor an eyesore. It was vibrant. It was fun. It was exciting, and it attracted people from all over Florida. Since this essential beach access was closed down, it has declined. The people stopped coming. They didn't come to, because they could park on the beach. They came because that the beach was there, and it was a beautiful beach to enjoy. And on top of that, there was a boardwalk they could go to, Main Street, the businesses along the way. Many of those businesses have closed. Most of them were locally owned by residents who loved our beach and loved Daytona as much as we do. The Boardwalk has declined. I told you about the, the business owner that I met there. So this is not about making this section of our public beach a parking lot. This is about restoring it as a destination our own residents, the people that we represent, can enjoy once again and have asked for repeatedly for 22 years. They have been against this closing of, of the beach. This, this is a simple ask, to send this back to staff in order to lay out the steps necessary for a timely, to bring back in a timely manner to comply with state law. I am asking this council to make a decision that has proven to have the opposite of the predicted results to reverse that decision. The reason this was done was for economic development and the belief that it would bring a flock of people in. The exact opposite has happened. It's been devastating to the beachside community, to the businesses that are, that are there. And it's, it took away a favorite part of the beach from people like me that grew up and worked on the beach. So I'm asking you to respond to the business owners who still remain and have asked for our help. This is both a real economic development question. This is both a real economic development question and a reversal of a failed policy many of our constituents have never liked. It lets remain the 60% of the beach that is closed. It doesn't touch that. We once had 47 miles of beach that we could drive in. There's now 17. There's been far more beach access taken away than what we have left. This has been a disaster for beach access, as predicted by the late T. Wayne Bailey, and I'll just, I'll end my comments here with a quote from him when he chaired the Volusia County Charter Review Committee. Says, "The right of public beach access and enjoyment should be clarified and codified. The committee has found that there is a definite need to protect the traditional rights of public access and enjoyment of Volusia beaches. Today, the public rights of access to the beach, which is a legally protected right, would be meaningless if vehicular access was not allowed." Volusia County Charter Review Committee final report in 1986. Vehicular access is beach access. Now, what, finally, what has changed since 1986? Has this? I got a letter from a constituent that says, "You're living in the past. You're living in the 70s and 80s." Well, let me tell you what hasn't changed. What I'm asking to do is not create a parking lot on the beach, but create real access for the people that live here and the people that come here, who can drive right on the beach, park their car, and for a couple hours or a half a day, be beachside property owners. They can, everything they need, they can have in their car. They can bring out their hibachi, their floats. The kids can play safely, and yes, beach driving is, has been proven safe for decades. I worked there for 10 years. We would get maybe one person a year hit by a car, and that was somebody backing up, and usually didn't even break a leg because of sand absorbent. It has 10 miles an hour. It has been proven safe. So we allow people to come down and enjoy the beach with everything they need. When we have parking, and we do have parking right across the street from this area, right across the street from the Boardwalk, I parked there. I was one of about seven cars that parked there. People aren't parking there and going to the beach and going to the businesses. They're not going to the beach because they don't want to haul their cooler full of food and beverages, their floats, their kids, and granny, and walk across all that traffic and try and get to the beach, and at the end of the day, reverse that process and haul all that stuff back. It's what made Daytona Beach famous to begin with, that you could park there and have everything you need to enjoy a day, coming from Deland, DeLeon Springs, or Daytona Beach. So that's the purpose of this. I'm asking this council to start the process so that we can bring some relief to the business owners and our own constituents who have asked us to open this beach. Councilman Jake Johansson.
Thank you, sir. I, this is kind of a, we've done this before, but your staff in this case, since you're proposing this or bringing this, the facts, so I have a few questions. I'm not familiar with the Main Street Business Association. Will they be presenting, or are they here today?
We do. We do have some members.
Got it. Did we need, did we include, do we need to include other stakeholders? The Chamber of Commerce comes to mind. Did we talk to them about this, or what's their input? And are there any other stakeholders, like the city of Daytona, that, you know, we just saw Ponce Inlet chime in and provide us some information on an item? Have they chimed in? Those are questions I would ask. This seems to, you know, something I'm willing to talk about, but it seems to be, seems to have come up with not a lot of time for me to ask those questions of those people, to prepare and make sure all the stakeholders have been notified. Plus, as I think we all have, we got a lot of email this week about this item, and by and large, I would say 85% of it is stick with what you got, don't allow it. There was a few people that want it, so...
Can you pause just for a second?
Yeah.
Since you're asking questions, I'll answer. That's what this is. This is starting that process of reaching out, which you just said has already started. We are getting a lot of email. This is a long process that takes time, and it gives everybody a chance. Probably the most important thing for the chamber and other stakeholders to find out is the same question that's already come up. What would the FWC say? Is it a major or a minor change? It should be a minor change because this is not a turtle beach. It's not during turtle season, and it's not at night, which the FWC is allowing other counties to do. We have the, well, I'm going to just stop there because I don't want to conclude your questions.
No, I think that's, I think that's the extent of my questions. I go back to a comment made earlier, which I respect in the charter. It says you can put anything on the agenda. Usually, we discuss things, the agenda before, and we agree to set a date downrange for an item to come back to us so staff can do research or we can do research. In this case, this didn't happen, so I need more time. I personally need more time, so I have too many questions asked right now, so I'll end it right here and wait for the conversation from the business owners and the debate. Thank you.
Okay. Well, again, that's what this is, a time for us to, for everybody to do the research, because it's not, it's not going to happen today. It's a long-term process. I don't see any other council members up yet, so let's move to the public comments. Derek Green.
Hello, Derek Green from Ormond Beach. Could I ask, we go to the third slide that was up earlier? I'm in management with Beach Rentals and Refreshments of Volusia County, LLC. We're a contractor with the county to provide beach services. I'm an operator of beach rental concessions in the traffic-free beach. My family and I have been in business there for 43 years. In that third picture you had, those were my umbrellas, and they were all down. And if all the umbrellas are down, we were either on a red light with lightning in the area, or the wind was 20 miles an hour or greater, so not very representative of a good beach day. I remember 25 years ago, council members discussing this issue for the proposed traffic-free area. I remember phrases like revitalizing the core and having an option for beachgoers to have a traditional beach experience. I've been there these last 25 years, and I'm here to say that these statements, as I remember them, have worked. It is a different type of beach experience from a traffic beach, and I understand cars on the beach and areas without off-beach parking available. But there are people who seek out and intend to park in the off-beach parking in the core, and it is popular, and it does get crowded. The whole mile on weekends gets packed with people, and high tide weekends, when the incoming tide condenses and forces everyone together. It is hard to keep people out of the one-lane emergency lane that's set up for emergency vehicles, to add another lane to make it two-way traffic, and a row for parked cars, and increase the conservation zone from 15 feet to 30 feet, and add space for a U-turn at Auditorium, as there is no beach approach at Auditorium. Would leave no room for the beachgoers who utilized the off-beach parking and have come for the traditional beach experience. I don't have pictures, and I know it's hard for people to get to the beach on, say, a high tide weekend, so I have a couple of webcams that usually show a good view of the crowds. Ocean Deck Spectrum News 13 webcam, it usually points to the north, showing the south side of the pier, and the Hilton WKMG Click Orlando webcam usually faces south, showing the north side of the pier. And you can see the activity that I'm talking about on a weekend or a high tide weekend, and that we just don't have the space for what's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Caffrey.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff. My name's Thomas Caffrey. I am Ormond Beach resident, and I am a business owner on Main Street in Daytona and current vice president of the Main Street Merchant Association. Beach driving for us, I grew up here. I went to Bonner Elementary at the other end of Main Street. It's called, you know, Fairview back then. It's always been here. It's always been something that I thought has been wonderful. We did it as a family when I was a kid into my early 20s. They got rid of it in March of 2000, right around there. I guess there was a vote that it was going to be revitalized. I was too young to pay attention to that. I don't see any revitalization over there. All I see is vacant lots, vacant buildings, torn-down monuments. I get a little emotional about it because it really is terrible what's going on over there. There's nothing good about it. It's really, really, really poor. The homeless that hang out under all of the monuments that are there are terrible, and it's not because they don't have other places to go. It's just there's nobody there to kind of shoo them off. I watched all of the buildings get torn down, historic buildings, buildings that were near and dear to me. And on behalf of the Main Street Merchant Association, we really want this back. We want it to be a discussion. We want it to be better for the area. I don't think what's being done right now is there. The parking lots that are there aren't even paved parking lots. They're just torn-down shells of buildings that they're using to park cars on. So nothing over there has been revitalized. It's way, way worse. All of the buildings, we used to have the busiest McDonald's in the country. We used to have the busiest Taco Bell in the country right there. We don't have anything over there anymore. We used to have Shell Seafood. We used to have some really, really exceptional places over there. They've all gone, and they didn't start leaving until after 2000 when the beach was closed. So that's really all I have to say, but I appreciate you guys having this. It's really, really important to us. It's amazing situation that you guys are hearing it kind of quick in your opinion, but this is a conversation that's been had by this council for a very, very long time, since it was closed, kind of battles back and forth. So I know it's a difficult one, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. I've only been in Daytona Beach 40 years, so when I hear people that say that I've been there, this is what it used to be like, they're wearing rose-colored glasses. I've heard, oh, we've lost all this beach. There used to be a place called Duffs, and on the walls were all these old pictures. And the water used to go out to the casino 50 years ago, 100 years ago. And now, the water's only going out to the casino, the exact same location. So how much did we actually lose? When I first got here, we used to walk the beach, about five miles. When I got up towards Bel Air Plaza, there was the old Bernardino House. The sand dune in front of it was 20-foot high. Then Hurricane Floyd came in, and all of our sand dunes vanished. And guess what we found at the very bottom of the sand dune? A seawall. Nobody builds a seawall 20 feet down under the ground without a reason, because at the time that place was built, in the 60s, the seawall was needed. The sand was that far down. We went 26 years without a major hurricane before Floyd. You're not hearing, now they say there was no development. Well, what you don't understand is that the reason it stopped, the city stopped it. If you look what Anderson proposed, it worked. In front of my house, there are seven properties developed. There's the old Marriott, the Hilton, Ocean Walk, Wyndham, Daytona Grand, the resort. All of that was built until we got to the portion where the pictures were taken, where the Boardwalk is. 20 years of a lawsuit. It was just settled last year, like a week before Anderson died. He didn't have enough time to build it, so it was prevented from being built. And the area south of Main Street where they're talking about, there were seven proposals, and the city turned each and every one down. Three condo hotels and the Hall of Fame, the Swimming Hall of Fame from Fort Lauderdale was supposed to go in. They turned it down. Just two, three years ago, there were two hotels for just south of Main Street, and the city filed them up, wouldn't let them go in. The city is causing all of this. It is not the project. The project worked, and the city prevented it. Yes, it's true. When Main Street stopped, it was the highest grossing approach in the county. Tons of money. It stopped dead, and literally, you could watch the stores close down Main Street. Don't vote for this.
Tom Guest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, county staff. I'm Tom Guest. I reside in Ormond Beach, and I have had businesses and rental properties on Main Street since 1985. I've seen a lot of things that have happened, and you depicted some of those very, very well, so I don't have to repeat a lot of that. But, you know, you did say that, you know, it was a project that was brought up, and it didn't work. It hasn't worked. So let's try something else. You know, when there was beach access and driving and parking on the beach, I'm also president of the Main Street Merchants Association, so we have discussed this, and, you know, everybody in the association is pretty much in tune with getting it back to what it was. There was, when we go back to 22 years ago or 25 years ago, and driving was taken off the beach. People used to come down there. They used to go to the beach. They used to park out on the beach, and maybe they'd get tidal land on the beach. They'd come walking up Main Street. Main Street was a thriving place back in the day, and this wasn't, I mean, there was a lot of things that happened to make Main Street what it is today, and there's no need to go into all that. But the first year that driving was taken off the beach, the first summer, the Main Street merchants suffered a 50% loss in their business. That's how much it has hurt Main Street. You know, it was very important to us, and, you know, you said that this was a long process to get something done. Let's get the process started so we can get back to what it was back when I opened a business there in 1985. You know, I've seen a lot of businesses go away. This wasn't the only thing that had happened. There was, you know, there was a lot of other things, and, you know, a lot of us that have been concerned with Main Street and beachside know some of the things that have happened, and I don't have time to go into all of this, but, you know, it's, I come, I came down, I moved down here from Maine, and I lived down at Wells Beach. There was a section of beach there, Moody Beach, which is now a private beach. The people that own houses along that beach own the beach. Do we want to see something like this happen? You know, let's open this up. Let's draw some of these, let's draw some of the vacationers back that want to drive on the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amy Pyle.
Hi there, everybody. My name's Amy Pyle. I am a 14-year resident in the Daytona Beach Main Street redevelopment area. I live two blocks from Main Street. I sit on Daytona Beach's Main Street Redevelopment Board and the Bike Week Task Force. I'm not representing those boards or the people on them with these comments, but you might find that both of those boards would support this move. During many During many of our meetings, we've discussed how to bring more activity to Main Street. I believe that when Main Street access to the beach was closed to driving, it seriously inhibited the business and activity there. Main Street's essentially a dead end and it looks like one. You saw the pictures. Right now, the beautiful Coquina Archway at the foot of the pier is dingy, dark and unattractive. It's a mess. The gates at both Main Street and Harvey Avenue's look kind of pointless and uninviting. Sometimes in a state of disrepair are hanging halfway open. The properties on either side of Harvey have become blighted and trashy, plagued with graffiti. For decades, it's looked like something is really missing there and as if we're waiting for something to happen and someone to care again. And maybe this move is the way to do that. I have a few neighbors who would rather have no driving on this beach, but we can still have it all to ourselves most of the year and especially at high tides during the summer, early mornings. We have plenty of time to enjoy that on our own. You'll hear from the Main Street merchants, which you just did, that opening it up for driving will bring customers to their starving businesses, shuttered buildings will be reopened, activity will discourage vagrants and vandalism, parking woes can be alleviated. We're always talking about a lack of parking in that area. Beach access instantly improves for, beach access will instantly improve for local underserved families as well as physically challenged individuals. It's good for everybody. But, most importantly, it's the restoration of a legacy of beach driving in Daytona that must be preserved. This is something that makes us unique. I hope if this discussion is fruitful, that the City of Daytona and Volusia County will pair this with the momentum from massive improvements to East ISB and initiate a promotional campaign that will make headlines and cause a tourist boom, tourism boom. Imagine the headline, "People are flocking to Daytona Beach again to be among the first to drive from Main Street onto the beach in decades." Who can argue with that? So, please pursue this, just check it out. You always have a chance to vote no later, but let's get the information. Thank you.
Mike Dennis.
Mike Dennis, Ormond Beach, Florida. In traveling around Florida, I have seen success, whoops, success everywhere on the beach, except here. So, you know, one suggestion is to just put blinders on and say, no, it's the best we can do. Why not look into it? What's it going to cost? Staff's time? You know, you guys are supposed to direct staff. So, if they come up with a whole lot of problems, well, we can't do it. But, if they come up with none, well, jeez, maybe we can do it. Again, as you travel through Florida, look at other beach towns and I'm amazed at some of the, West Palm Beach, for example, last time I was there, there was like a three-foot cliff in the sand, you know? We have the most beautiful beach in Florida, I think, and yeah, I'm prejudiced. And I've been here since fifty-six, so I am a long time. I got a lot of sand in my shoes and so on. So, take the blinders off. Look, what's it going to cost us? Look, what's the possibilities? Thank you.
Ann Ruby.
In a million years, I never thought I would get up and say anything positive about beach driving, ever. I just find it puzzling. But, what I also find puzzling is why Main Street and our core tourist area in Daytona Beach looks as bad as it does. And I think we have a rebirth of the Merchants Association. I think they're asking for one lever to consider pulling this one lever. Get the information. You're not voting today to approve or disapprove of this, but get the information. There are so many things that the city and the county could do to work together to improve Main Street. Parking lot C is a mess. We need a Botran trolley system that will connect Dunlot and Granada and Beach Street to the Beachside. That would help the merchants. There are so many things the city and the county could be working on together and this is one of them. It could take years to get the beach driving actually restored and at that point, you can hear from the other people. You can actually make the definitive vote, but without the information, you're just hamstringing them. You're saying, well, we're going to take that solution away from you. So, why not look into this? Get the information. And the stakeholders that you want to hear from, the chamber, the hotels, let them come up with some solutions on how they can help make the Beachside be less blighted in the core tourist areas. They don't just get to say, no, no, we don't want that. Because it's got to be, it's got to be a joint solution. And I think tonight, this could start with just asking for the information, learning about what it's going to take. How long is it going to take? If this is a ten-year process, the merchants could have revitalized it all by themselves by then, but let's start it. I think it's important and I never thought I'd ever say that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the people that signed up to speak during public comment. One of the things that I considered, you know, when the merchants came to me and said, you know, do this, I have spent a lot of time in this area on the beach, but one of the things I considered was the vendors that are there. When I, a long time ago, when I worked there and the beach was absolutely packed, the concessioner there was Bill Finley. He had a float stand, chairs, umbrellas. He became a millionaire there and he paid the lifeguards who sat in front of his, in front of his concession. He would pay them extra to keep the floats in waist deep water because he didn't want to lose any of his floats. But, the fact that there was beach driving did not hurt their business. When I was there and took the pictures that you saw, and I'm not arguing with the vendors that came here, I support the vendors. I think, I've looked at your business and it's, it looks good, it looks sharp, your equipment looks good, you're doing everything right. But, I walked the beach, I walked the boardwalk. I don't know what was going, it was overcast, but there was not lightning there that day. What I did see, somebody sent me this morning a video that I did four years ago during the campaign, same area, took a video of the beach, took a video of the boardwalk. It looked exactly the same as those pictures that I put. There is not a soul on the beach. There was, finally, I said in the video, oh, wait, here comes two people walking down the boardwalk. This is revitalization. You have heard from local business owners that have their life invested in this and they're asking us for help. The help is not some scary thing. It's, as the last speaker said, it's taking a little step forward, an incremental step, to get the information that we need to know if this is wise or not. I believe it's wise, but I'm not asking you, I'm not pushing you, this council, into making an all or enough decision. I want to help you get the information that we all need. There is absolutely a direct correlation between the death of this section of the beach and the removal of beach driving in that area. Don't, don't take this away from the merchants that have come here and asked us for our help. Vice Chair Troy Cant.
Thank you, Chairman, for recognizing me, but also thank you for bringing this up and advocating for a possible change here. Counsel and those listening, you know, those of you know me, know that I was born in the Halifax Hospital. You know that I've lived here my entire life. I wasn't surprised to find out that in the early and mid nineties, Taco Bell in Daytona Beach Beachside had the number one sales when I heard this for the entire nation. When you went by Taco Bell at midnight to three in the morning, there was a line out the door. Behaviors were appropriate and the place was making money hand over fist. So, to hear that there were others that had the highest sales in that area, that doesn't surprise me either. Chairman, do you mind if I ask Mr. Caffrey to come up? I have a couple of questions for you. Is that okay? Chairman?
It's good with me if the rest of the council doesn't object.
Mr. Caffrey, how long have you owned your business on Main Street?
Six years about.
Kept the doors open for six years?
Yes, sir.
Why Main Street, knowing that that beach access was shut down there?
It's a funny, longer question maybe I have time for, but we bought, my friend Krista and I bought the building together as an investment because we knew that we could have a business twice a year, make a lot of money. We didn't plan on opening up a business. We planned on just doing itinerant vending like everybody else does in that area. So, we started out doing it that way. First October, we didn't occupy the building. We rented it out for a handsome amount of money. And then, we decided we didn't want to do that anymore. We wanted to develop the building. We wanted to restore the building, make it better, not just do this, do it something better. So, we started with pallet classes and a wine bar on Main Street. We did it that way and then we, that was a whole thing. We didn't even want to be a bar. They wouldn't allow us to do BYOB as an art studio. They said that's a bottle club. So, we had to change that and revamp that. Then for the hop cycle, we had the fifteen passenger pedal bike. We don't do that any longer, too much insurance, too expensive to maintain. And then we became a brewery. We actually had to go to the city and change the law to become a brewery in that district because they didn't allow it for us.
I applaud you for trying and your open year round?
Yes, seven days a week.
And you keep people employed?
Yeah, we've got about eight employees.
I publicly applaud you for having the guts to do what you're doing. It takes guts, it takes initiative, it takes drive. I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much for that. Ms. Ruby, Mr. Caffrey and the other people that spoke, I just want to tell you that over ten years ago, I served on the Beachside Redevelopment Committee. I was, I was Ormond Beach's representative. There were roughly fifteen to twenty people on this committee. There is a novel of recommendations that this very smart group of women and men who worked for a year presented to the county of Volusia and to the City of Daytona Beach. I would recommend you go to the City of Daytona Beach and say, where is this document and why haven't you implemented any of it? I think it's a great first step because, like I said, this was a lot of work by a lot of people for a year of their life for it to get shelved somewhere and it's just collecting dust. So, I want to make sure that that is there. I grew up in Ormond Beach and surfed across the street, but I can tell you, I would go to this location often when the surf was good and we would drive on the beach, we would park right there. The place was thumping with people. It, there were appropriate behaviors back then, beach rangers were there, lifeguards were there, concessionaires were there and everything seemed to work. There's no doubt in my mind that this decision back in 2000 created essentially a private beach and I can see why certain business owners who make money from the people that stay in the hotels don't want anything to change. But, you have a Main Street that is starving and for you, sir, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but you said the first year that it was implemented, there was a fifty percent decrease in sales. It just is gut wrenching to hear that, like, who thought this through? Stop the insanity, okay? The proof is in the pudding. Look at the results. This isn't a happy cheerful place. I want a place like Shell's to go eat at like I did when I was younger. You go meet with Lynn Flanders, the director of the Ocean Center, lovely lady, you know, thank you, George, for hiring her, but, you know, you go meet with her and then say, hey, let's go to lunch around here. I don't know where you're going. So, Chairman, I will make a motion after I hear from everybody else to direct staff to bring this back for more information. We're not voting on this tonight to change it, you know? We've got the things we have to do, but this is one that, there's meat on this bone and I want to chew on it a little bit.
Thank you. Councilman Dempsey.
Yeah, ditto, Troy. I agree with everything you just said and thanks, Chair, for bringing this up. That's one. But, he's not bitter. Yeah, I don't go to the beach anymore because I'm old, but when I was younger and my son, yeah, back in the nineteen hundreds with Mr. Nicholson down there and watching him with a swim cap. I remember he was busy back then. My son and I would park on the beach, go swim, go on the boardwalk, play in the video games at the arcades, get the ice cream, walk around, go down and get my seafood at the McDonald's, the Filet-O-Fish. And it was, I always remember it being busy. You know, I haven't been back there, I'm a west side guy, but I'm hearing it's dead and I'll take your word for it that the economy down there is dying and I know we do a lot to help other businesses in Daytona. We did Daytona One, we do the Beach Street revitalization, which I've always said makes it even harder for the Main Street people to survive. I knew some business owners on Main Street back when it was thriving and they were talking about how difficult it was to maintain a business year round. I know some seasonal guys that did very well during the Bike Week events and the Race Week and all that, but, yeah, I think it's great. We need to look into it. I don't necessarily trust the wisdom of our predecessor councils, so I think this is something that's important enough to, you know, revitalize. I wish we could go back and undo some other stuff from previous councils, but at least this is a good one to start with. So, I'm in favor of looking into, I'm not saying I'm voting for it, but we do need to look into it to help the merchants. So, I'm supporting you too, Joe.
Thank you, Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. I had, again, to kind of echo what Mr. Johansson said, didn't have a lot of time to look into it and I understand what we're doing, you know, as far as giving it, getting the information to give us time to have those conversations. I actually only had the ability to talk to a few people, one of which was the Sheriff's Office, because public safety is a big concern of mine and maybe I dig too deep into it thinking about the type of vehicles that were driving on the beach when that driving was allowed, different from what we have now. I mean, we did a great job by removing the squatted trucks with visibility, so I think that's a plus. If you had asked the Sheriff's Office, they have an area that they can respond to in that emergency area lane and they were telling me that oftentimes, they wish they could just drop a line just to try to get people out because at certain times, it is packed and people have become accustomed to the fact that it's one area of the beach that's not driving. That being said, I also understand your concern though too and the fact of your businesses. Knowing all this, I have a question, I guess for you, George. We're not going to be able to even do that until November to where we can even talk with the individual that's going to be in that seat, whoever that may be, or any of the other state legislation because they're all up for reelection. So, there's no guarantee on who those individuals will be, so you can't have those conversations until that time. I'm a by-step type person, you know, and I'd like to know what those answers are. Does it warrant taking it further? And so, I leave it to you, George, if that's a question you can ask. Is that true?
Well, the timing part's correct. You know, we have to, it will take time to discuss with our legislative delegation. That'll be, and really, that's something they're going to look to what you guys are saying. This is something that this body wants. And of course, also, there'll be other constituents. And of course, also there'll be other constituents that will be in play, mainly like you say, the city of Daytona Beach and what does their body want to do? So I would say before we approached anybody, that way we need to know what our official stance is and what their official stance is.
Before you can take it further to the, to the state?
Yep.
Thank you.
Point of order, Chair.
And then I have a reply to your question as well. There's a point of order. What's your point?
Chairman, just to stay in process, keep the flow going on this item. We're obviously in the debate. If we can call for a motion in a second so we can do it by the book. Thank you.
Well, we are doing it by the book. That he asked questions of the county manager. There, there might have been some debate down there. I think Troy asked questions. Don, you bad. You were guilty. So unless you want to override my vote, I would say your, your point is not well taken because everybody's asking questions right now. This is important.
Chairman, respectfully, I didn't say it wasn't important. Problem is we, there was, with the exception of Matt, and I get that, that we need to talk about it. I just want to follow the process because there was about 30 minutes of statement. But I'll do whatever the, the will this council was looking to do.
I have a question from Michael Dyer. Matt just said that the process was going to the state legislature first. And my opinion, the way I understood it, what we've, what was laid out here is that the first step would be to look at the incidental take permit and find out whether or not the FWC thinks it's major or minor. Am I wrong? Is that the first step or would the first step be going to the, I think the legislature needs that information as well.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mentioned before, there's four issues that we kind of have to deal with. A silos of issues. You really almost have to deal with them at the same time. So you have the state law issue to restore beach driving, which you'd have to get to the delegation. They would have to support for it to move forward. You have the federal permit, as you said, about working with the service on whether they would treat it as a major or minor amendment and what would have to be done. You have the issue of the customary use and also contractual commitments. I know there's a development agreement between City of Daytona and Ocean Walk Properties. There may be others that could be things that are obstacle, potential obstacles for us. I think we need to explore all those if you want us to move ahead.
Thank you. That's why I said it's a long process. There is a lot, and that, that's all that's happening here, start the, the process. Vice Chair Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. George and/or Mike Dyer. Who, what elected body makes the final decision on the beaches in Volusia County? I don't care who answers it, one or the other.
It depends on the issue. The council has sole regulatory authority. The legislature has control over the beach driving issue. And the federal government has authority over activities covered by the ATP and ITP.
I didn't hear you say any city.
The only thing the city would come in with whatever contractual relationships that may exist due to the fact that we made agreements at the time when it was taken off with, I think, some of the development community that was there and that would have to be researched.
Gotcha. And I don't know that I am gonna eventually vote and support this. I never would have voted to take the driving off, ever. I never would have done that. But what's done is done. And I don't have a DeLorean or any other type of time machine to go back at 88 miles per hour. So, but when I was a city commissioner in the city of Ormond Beach, there were a lot of things I wanted to change about the beach because I felt like this beach was mismanaged by this county. And I'll just say, I can appreciate that we want to hear from Daytona Beach. But it's one of the reasons I ran to have a seat at the table instead of being served on the menu. So, and, and to Mr. Reinhardt, just, I appreciate your comments, but as far as, as far as what staff is working on, and George, don't take this the wrong way because I'm a fan of yours and what you do with staff. But you do what this elected body directs you to do, period. You don't lead us, we lead you. We set policy and direction, period. So if we want this to go on the front burner of staff, then we tell you we want it on the front burner with staff and that's, that's how it is. And that's how it's supposed to be. I will make a motion at this time to direct staff to bring this item back to us and look at all the pros and cons of bringing beach driving back from International Speedway Boulevard to Auditorium Boulevard. In that motion, George or Mike, do you need a date certain to bring that back? You don't, okay? And I'm not going to put a date certain on it. I'm going to say whenever staff can, can bring that back. There's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Vice Chair Kent to send this back to staff to look at all the different parameters, the good, the bad, and pros and cons. No date certain. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don Dempsey. Thank you. So now we're in debate. Councilman Johansson.
Thank you, sir. I'm really not opposed to this discussion. However, I do want to reflect back to our, our early, early in the year, I think it was February 20th, I know it was February 20th. We had a conversation about our goals and where this particular item fit in a goal as, as it pertained to the state of the county. And, and I suppose it could be loosely placed into one of these goals. But, but I don't know where, so if, if it does get voted for follow-on discussion, I really would like to know where it fits and why it's important enough to bring right now. It wasn't a county council goal. We never talked about it in our goal setting. And, and I'm not opposed to this, but it, it, it's not a goal. And, and I think it takes away from some of the stuff that, that we'd rather, well, that council would rather do, not individually. And so, you know, with that, I'm trying to, like, like we sometimes say, I want to try to stand on task. I think that, I think the conversation and the communication with the stakeholders, the chamber, the, the, the other stakeholders, the city, who, who we do impact. We just said we didn't want to impede on Ponce Inlet for their program. It's our beach. I don't, I don't want to impact Daytona without having a conversation. I think those conversations could be had without directing George to have that conversation. And, and up till this point, I haven't heard people clamoring to, to put driving back on the beach in this area, although again, I'm ready to discuss it. But, but they are talking about flooding and they are talking about other things. So I wonder what the importance of this is. It, it doesn't come at no cost. It's not like we can have a conversation and, and not incur lawyer time and, and and executive leadership time talking with all these people. So it, it does come at a cost. And, you know, Danny and I were talking about a book I'm reading on, on acquiescence. Maybe this is not the right time, maybe it is, but maybe it isn't the right time to talk to the, the state about getting driving back on the beach when we have other things that are important that we discuss with the state and resolve. I've seen that asking the state for too many things at once means you get none. So I'm, I'm a little conflicted right now on the, on the timing of this. And, and those are my concerns. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to go over a couple of things here when it comes to the correlation between business and why things are possibly the way they are in Daytona Beach. Many know I was a police officer in Daytona Beach for quite a while. At times I've known every square inch of that city. The nineties and two thousands, so what's different? How did we get here? So in the ninety, two thousands, what do we have that we don't have now? We had over 100 special events. That's the start. I've said it before on this council that Daytona Beach as our, pretty much our economic driver, we better be thinking of other things because we don't have special events. We're, we claim to be a special events town that has no special events or very few. I probably count them on one hand. Okay? We had MTV. We had Hawaiian Tropic events. We had a wide open spring break where it's no holds barred. You know, when I was a kid, I saw this, my eyes lit up. I said, oh my God, this is, this is amazing, right? When I got down here in 2003, a little bit different, okay? It wasn't just that. We heard vending like everyone else does things that are seasonal now. Why is that? Is it a business model? Is it because we don't have special events? Crime. I can tell you firsthand, crime in Daytona Beach is worse than Deltona. Back then, we didn't have the population that we have now. It is doubled, okay? Staffing police officers is an issue. We can't get them in the city. It's always been that way. It was like that before I was a cop there. It was like that when I was a cop there. And it's going to be like that a cop there, after I was a cop there. The transients. We have a lot of transient activity in our beachside and our business and core area. You have to ask yourself once again, why aren't businesses coming here? And do you want to bring your family here? I will not bring my family through or to Daytona Beach without the scanner app on my phone to see what's going on, when. And because I know that the, the, some of these core areas that we expect our tourism to go, there's public safety issues, graffiti everywhere, transients, drunks, prostitutes, they're everywhere. I would disagree to say that, that beach driving is the sole issue here or the catalyst because I know firsthand that it's not. And I agree with Mr. Kent where it says, hey, if it was up to maybe us or me, I wouldn't have messed with it. I would have tried cleaning up some of the other areas before we took this big leap. But to go down this road and try to, to do some of this stuff now, there's a lot of other things that need to be cleaned up before we, we put this cart before the horse. I believe this is premature. I don't know personally why there's a motion on the floor. And that's just my opinion because I've, like all of our other council members, this isn't the first time this subject has come up. At any point in time, we can request information. We heard this chairman in 2021 when we took office. I believe you brought it back in 2022 for discussion. And then now, we have all the information. Alls we have to do is literally type a two-line email. Staff, may I have the background information on this? Enter. Okay? And then we get it. What I don't want to see now is getting bogged down, even though this is a valid issue. Like we had members of Ponce Inlet say, there's a way to do this, an efficient and effective way to do this. We have unanswered issues right now with the city of Daytona Beach. This is going to affect them and their merchants, their businesses. We need to have them at the table. So we're not on the menu. Okay? We have thousands of yards of linear feet, excuse me, thousands of yards of easement between Auditorium and Main Street that we would have to lock down. We don't have the, if they wanted to, prior to even bringing this up. We saw in, with the dog beach, we saw it when it came to sexual offenders. We saw it when it came to other public, uh, public safety issues that several of us initiated. All this stuff is, is readily available. Chairman, if you need more time to, to get this, I'll be willing to, to hear your story and, and you know, bring it back. But I, I think this is premature. Staff has a full plate. I'll support you if, if you bring this stuff back to us, but to have, to have them chasing a windmill is, is not the direction I'd like to see go. Thanks.
Councilman Dempsey.
Yeah, I am, I was really torn on this and I did a lot of thinking over the weekend about it and I hear what you're saying about the timing and right now we don't even know who the legislator is that's going to be representing this area, but short of a referendum on beach driving, what better way for the voters to express their desires than voting for the candidate that sees this the way they want? You may have one candidate that's for beach driving. You may have one candidate against it. Who better than the voters on election day to determine which person they want in office? The one supporting beach driving or the one against beach driving? I was a prosecutor for the beach back during the times of MTV. And I remember working the substation over there behind the Ocean Center and we had a portable jail. We processed people right there in and out for every misdemeanor. And I mean, it was a mill. And, but I also remember how thriving the economy was back then. I don't know if it was so much dangerous. It just brought in a lot of people. It was very vibrant back then. And even during the non-event, events or times, it was always crowded. I just always remember, it was always a good time taking my son over there and doing beach stuff and walking around. So I, like I said, I haven't been over there in 20 years, but I'm taking everybody's word for it, how bad the economy is over there on Main Street. And now that we've created competing areas with the Beach Street revitalization and One Daytona, these guys really have an uphill battle on their hands. So I do think it's ripe to talk about. I think the timing of this issue might actually be perfect because it is election season. And it might be something that should be discussed and debated by the the potential candidates at the legislative level, at the local level. And, you know, let the voters express their desires at the ballot box. So I'm, I'm actually in favor of this now. I hate to make the staff go through this again, but like I said, I don't necessarily like the decisions of our predecessor councils. If I could, this is our first time, yeah, I've never got the vote on this 20 years ago. And if I could get in a, you know, Superman costume and go back in time and undo Sunrail, I would undo Sunrail in a second if we could. But here we are. If we could undo, Troy, if I was on the council 20 years ago, I'd probably be against getting rid of beach driving as well. But I'm not saying it's the best. I'm not committed one way or the other, but I think it's fair to bring this back up for discussion. And that's where I am. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll, I'll take my second bite. It won't be long. You're kind of trying to get a feel for where we are on the council. There's only six of us here today. If it's a three-three vote, it fails. So we need a fourth person to say, I want to move this ahead and let the public, the cities, everybody, hear the debate, which will take some time. Why, where does this fit in to our goals? I don't see them yet. I asked for the goals to be put up, but it was, you know, there's a lot going on. But this fits in, I would say, because it's economic development. And we have all stated up here that we want to help businesses thrive, that we want to bring more businesses here. Let them see a council that's friendly to business and, and giving them just one more tool in their arsenal to be successful. It's not the, it's not the silver bullet. The Main Street Association has to go out and do other things as well to, to be successful. But this is a tool that they need. And why now? Because they asked for it. And because for three years I've had public And because for three years, I've had public ask for it, and it's, you know, to table it, to bring it back? I've already done that. It's, I brought it up, it got tabled, brought it, I brought it back because of this merchant association that sits in front of you here and the public that said, we really need your help to do this. Why aren't businesses coming here? I'm not even going to go there, but I am going to say this is an opportunity to show them that, that we are, that we listen to our businesses and we try and do everything we can to make their lives, to make the possibility of them being successful, a real possibility and that we don't stand their way. It's, it's interesting, everybody's for beach driving. Well, now we have a chance to vote on it. We, we actually have a chance to say, yes, I'm for beach driving. Let's vote to see if it's even possible in this area. That's what stands here. It's, we can't, we can't say I'm, I'm for it, I'm for it and, and take this tool away from the merchants and the residents. The city will come to the table as we go through this process. The chamber will come to the table. It gives, that's the process. It gives everybody a chance to come and speak to this. The, I, I want to, I want to give the people that came here that represent, you represent all the merchants on Main Street. I want to let you know that this council supports economic development, and we will dig in and see if, if this is possible. Incidental take permit, the state legislature, I had a town hall meeting last night with Representative Webster Barnaby, who was a staunch beach driving supporter when he ran for county council. Now, we, we don't know if he'll get reelected. He's also up for reelection. So let them, let them come to the table. Why now? Because it's, it's a pressing need on the core beachside that has been ruined when we did this. It's, it's, it, it gives us an incredible opportunity to reverse a decision that hurt beachside merchants and residents alike. So I'm, I'm asking for one of the three people on this side, just to give it the opportunity, this side of, of the dais, who have reasonable questions and are not ready to vote today for the final thing, but I'm asking you to vote today to let it take this little step forward so that we can all get engaged. I think it's that important. Vice Chair Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. Putting, I'll make that comment in just a second, but I'll just say, even though I made the motion for this, I want you, Chairman, to know and council, I want you to know and the public that's here and, and listening, it doesn't mean I'm going to support this, but I'm supporting having the conversation. I promised this council something, and that included all of you. And I'm not going to play politics here, but I'm going to state some facts. I don't know Jeff Brower, really. I, I know he didn't support me in the election. Too bad because I won. But he made a decision, his decision. He didn't know me. He doesn't know me. We've never had a phone conversation, we don't hang out, nothing like that. But I promise this council, if you have something that's important to you, it's important to me. Removing the three-day waiting period on gun sales, creating a program at the jail so our inmates can have a farm-to-table sort of, you know, situation there, talking about a motocross in a wildly inappropriate location. But, but darn it, you read our rules. This isn't a one-person Gladiator show. You better have some people that like your ideas or you're going to get nothing accomplished. Like me or don't like me, agree with me or don't agree with me, for all of us, I, there's things you bring up that I like and things you bring up that I think are wackadoodle. But let's have the discussion because each of you represent over 100,000 people, and if it's important to you, it's important to me. And I'm going to offer you the exact same thing that I'm giving every council member, nothing more, nothing less. I think it's disingenuous to not give you that opportunity. That's why I made the motion, and that's why I, I stand by the motion. I hope that you all would, would do that for me. You can shoot me down with it if you don't like my idea, once you've heard all of the facts, but gosh, not having the conversation, not having the conversation about getting our local Volusia County residents on the beach at no extra charge with their vehicles. Notice I said no extra charge, not, not free because they're already paying for it. And guess what? The consultants gave us eight million reasons why this is a good idea. Eight million new dollars, which is going to be coming back up to us, George, I'm hoping pretty soon here. But if we didn't have, if you didn't allow me to have that conversation, it would have been dead in the water. And that doesn't feel good. And I want to give you the same opportunity to, to be successful on something that's important to you, which is why I want to support this today.
Thank you. Councilman Johansson.
Yes, sir. I'd like to add, so the public's aware, we, we had a few merchants here that support driving on the beach and, and thank you very much for coming. In addition to that, we received a, a bunch of email from a bunch of hoteliers in the area, and, and I consider them business owners in the area too. And by and large, not 100%, but by and large, they are opposed to it. For, for opposite reasons, different reasons are big, they don't live here, you got, one of them is a foreign investor, all that, doesn't matter. They're business owners here, and, and they have a right to express their thoughts about how their tenants, how their, how the people that fill those beds and what they think. And, and those folks get feedback and, and provide it. And so, so part of, part of that input is, is important to me too. And like I said, the majority of them are, are not for it. So I, I have to take that into consideration as well. And, and oh, by the way, getting that information happened pretty quick, happened within, within days. So I'm, I'm just, I'm a little bit, I, I, I go along with Mr. Robbins on this. I think more homework could have been done prior to bringing it to us. I don't, I don't necessarily see the rush and, and therefore I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little less torn than, than Mr. Dempsey is on it at this point. Thank you.
Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to offer some clarity to things. Carissa, can you restate the motion for us?
The motion was to direct staff to bring the item back to us and look at all of the pros and cons to bring back driving from International Speedway Boulevard to Auditorium Boulevard in Daytona Beach.
Thank you. That was awesome. Okay. To bring back information. My point was, council, we want to take a vote to request information that none of us need a vote or permission to ask for that information. That is the motion essentially. None of us need the permission or the vote to ask for information, just staff to bring it back. To paint this picture that this council does not support economic development, Chair, or the prior council, I, I think is highly false. And, and to the point, Chairman, about two years ago, you had actually voted to, to cut the economic development budget by two to four million. So I, I just want to be clear on that, 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 that statement is false, and I, I don't want this council or myself or anybody to get that black eye or paint a picture to our business community that we rely on, that we do not support our businesses because we, we absolutely do. At this point, we're looking to bring back information. I don't have a problem with that, but is this, at this point, we know that we don't need a, a vote to ask for information from our staff. This isn't our first rodeo. Are we doing this for just politically symbolic? I want to be effective and efficient with our time. There's a, a way to do this and a process. It's nothing against the, the, the merchants, it's nothing against beach driving. I, I think there's some political theater here. I think it was impeccably timed, and we're voting on essentially something we don't need permission to vote on. We don't need permission to get the council's permission to get this information, essentially. That's the motion. I'm just putting the dots together for you.
Was that it? Okay. I don't see anybody else up, but that was a, almost an accusation, and so I'm going to respond to it. I didn't use my five minutes. What you just said is absolutely false. We, I did need to ask for that information. I went to the county attorney and asked him, and he said, bring it before the council and get them to agree to allow us to dig in and bring you back this information. There's just a lot here that has to be done. This vote, I'm not asking you to vote on beach driving today. I'm asking you to allow the county attorney to do what he has told me needs to be done, that he wrote in the package for this item of the four things that have to be done. And in order to do that, he needs this council to direct him to do that. That's, that's what the vote is for, and that's what I'm asking. I don't see anybody else that wants to talk, so I'm going to ask Carissa to call for the vote, to move this ahead in an incremental step to bring back the information that the, to direct the county staff to bring back the information that they have told me they need county direction, county council direction for.
Councilman Robbins.
Thank you. For the record, I believe Mr. Dyer did provide this information on beach driving, sir, when you had brought it back up in 2022. We had an agenda item on it. He did provide all that information, and I believe it was in, attached to the agenda item. I saw the headlines for it last night when I Google searched it. I saw the WESH TV update on it, and it was from somewhere in 2022, maybe October. So we, you and I have been provided this information on it, Chair. I just don't want to get amnesia.
Different, different council, and the attorney said I needed to get the.
My, my point was.
The council to vote for.
You and I have the information. You're saying you don't have the information, you brought it up two times prior. Thank you.
Hasn't been brought before this. Council, Carissa, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Reinhardt.
No.
Mr. Robbins.
No.
Mr. Dempsey.
Yes.
Mr. Johansson.
No.
Mr. Kent.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
Chair.
What is your point? Mr. Dyer? Correct. If this is a three-three vote, it dies.
That, that's correct.
If I am on the winning side of this, can I bring this back up? The answer is, I think, yes. I just want to hear it from you publicly.
You can make a motion to reconsider the vote.
Because Mr. Santiago's not here, and we're not a full council. So I'm going to play a little chess right now. News Journal, any other media that's here, I'm going to vote no on this so that I have an opportunity to bring this back up when Mr. Santiago is here, because I think this needs the full discussion of the entire council. Puts a lot of weight on Mr. Santiago, but, you know, hey, that's part of the job. Mr. Dyer, is that correct, that I can bring this back up if I, if I'm on the winning side of this?
If, if you're on the prevailing side, yes. If you're on the prevailing side, you would make a separate motion to reconsider and it would come back.
Right. I would, I would need Mr. Santiago to be with the majority, and, and he may not. So to the Main Street merchants and to all of those out there, this is strictly a chess move. No.
Mr. Brower.
Uh, yes. So the motion fails for this time at four to two. Two yeses, four noes. Don't come up yet. Thank you all who came in.
Go eat dinner.
We will, we will take a break until 7:30. It's almost seven o'clock.
I don't eat, I don't know.
Yeah, it's almost seven.
The sun's still out.
Do, do the right, do the right thing?
I'm surprised.
Well, I don't know about that.
We should have all the information by, by the time we get back from lunch.
Yeah. That's why I took a break.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. We will resume the meeting at 7:31 with item six. Amendment number one to agreement number WG-036 with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Budget Resolution appropriating grant funds. This one's revenue.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council members, good evening. Ben Bartlett, Public Works Director. Before you, on this item is an amendment to our grant agreement with the DEP for an additional revenue of $25 million for the upgrades to our Southwest Regional Water Reclamation Facility down in DeBary. This brings our total grant-funded amount of money on this project to just over $60 million. We are currently in design, anticipate awarding for construction in this fall, and then completing said construction at the end of 2026, and recommend approval of the amendment as well as a budget resolution for a previous grant from the Water Management District as well as this amount of money. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve item six by Vice Chair Troy Kent.
Take it.
Second by Councilman Joe Hanson. You don't mind if I give it to him?
You can take it.
Any questions? We also have Michael Olwerk here if anybody had to... Oh, you're here for the next one. No, actually, shout out to Mike. He's working hard to get this grant money for us. He deserves all the credit on this one.
Okay. Questions? Comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries six to zero. Item seven, contract with Amcon Development Group LLC for the Spruce Creek Fly-In Water Treatment Plant improvements.
Yes, sir. So this is an award of a construction contract for some upgrades to our Spruce Creek Fly-In Water Treatment Facility. Some much-needed work needs to be done out there to bring that facility up to current standards. The engineer's opinion of cost was 2.1 million. Lowest responsive and responsible bid was 1.78 million from Amcon, and we recommend approval of the contract. Happy to answer any questions.
Move approval? Vice Chair Kent makes a move to approve. Second just came from Councilman Reinhardt. Questions for staff? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries six to zero. Well done, Michael.
Thank you.
Item eight, discussion on removal of criteria four and five from consideration in review of variance applications and approval for the Growth Management Director or designee to waive the two-year survey requirement for variance applications. Director Irvin.
Good evening, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Back in March, Councilmember Santiago identified that there had been some conflicts where staff was making recommendations of denials on variances, and you saw the PLDRC approving it, excuse me, the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission approving them, and some of those were coming here in front of you as far as an appeal. And he felt that perhaps a revisit of those criteria, bringing back to you what originated in 2021 from the actual Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission was to drop two of the five criteria entirely out of consideration. We currently have five criteria that staff evaluates. They have to meet all five for staff to recommend approval. First one are their special conditions or exist or circumstances for the property, that the circumstances and special conditions are no result of the property owner, and that literal interpretation of the code will deprive the property owner of a right shared by others. The two that we are talking about possibly getting rid of are the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make it possible for reasonable use of the property, building, or structure or sign, and that the granted variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this article in the county's comprehensive plan. So if this is done, what would happen is you would have those three criteria that are still, as I said, that are really tied to making it a unique circumstance. So it's not going to make it necessarily any easier. It's just going to allow for those three criteria. The council is also being brought up to speed on what we require for a variance. Currently, we require a variance, a survey, no older than two years. We want to make it consistent with what we do with other applications, which allowed up to five years. And typically, what we're looking at is if you have a survey that's three to four years old, and we can verify... old, and we can verify through aerial photography that the survey is accurate and precise, then we would be able to accept those. So staff is really here for your direction. If you feel that this is an appropriate action, we can prepare an amendment to the zoning ordinance, present it to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, and bring it back for your action after that.
Councilman Johansson.
Yes, Clay, why? Is there any merit to having five and three of them be mandatory and two of them be optional? Or are you...
That was the original concept that the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, wasn't it that was to keep all five, but saying that you only had to meet a majority of those in order to gain a recommendation of approval from staff?
Got it. But the importance of one through three, more so than four and five?
Yes, sir. You know, again, that really identifies why a variance is needed. You don't want to just hand out variances because someone doesn't like the setback that they're facing.
Right.
Or the height restriction that they have. You want to make sure that there is a unique circumstance that allows for this deviation from the zoning regulations that would normally be applied. So that's why you see one, two, and three are that way. But again, if the council feels that keeping all five, but making it such that staff only has, in their review, if they find that a majority of the criteria are met, can make a recommendation of approval, that's another option.
That's the end of my questioning.
Any other questions? Any comment? Jake Johansson.
Thank you, sir. I'm, we, we're going to have a workshop either this year or next to talk about permitting and whatnot, and I want to allow staff to be smart but agile. I want them to engage their brains and be able to make decisions. I would like to give them as much latitude as we can possibly give them to get things approved and go to PLRDC with a good product. So I'm inclined to give them the latitude, to give them the option of picking the three that fit, if you will, or that they have to have a preponderance of the criteria and also to waive the survey. I think that's important. So is that clear, Clay? I can make a motion.
Well, I think we're, in order for us to take action, we would want a motion specifically directing staff to prepare an amendment. If you want me to, I can kind of like...
Yeah, go ahead, and I'll tell you if that's what I want.
So what I'm hearing is prepare an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for staff to utilize three of the, a majority of the five criteria in making recommendations to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission on applications of variances and granting the Growth and Resource Management Director availability of waiving the two-year requirement if sufficient data is available.
That is my motion.
Carissa, did you get all that motion?
I did.
Okay. Motion is, as just stated, by Don, I'm sorry, by Jake Johansson. I'm looking at all the names here. And the second came from Matt Reinhardt. Any further questions, Jake? Did you have a...
No.
Okay. No other questions? Any comments? All in favor of the long motion just stated, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Item nine, appointment of three members to the Personnel Board, and this, Carissa, you can correct me and give us some more detail, but I believe any member could make this, the councilman can make this nomination.
Correct. Any member can make this nomination. I did just want to make note that Vince Ryan, he was recently appointed to the Educational Facilities Authority that is due off his holding board, so he would not be able to serve or be appointed to the Personnel Board at this time.
So that leaves...
That would leave Mary Ann Connors and Paul Chippock to be appointed to the board.
We actually need three. So we will only get two today. The board can continue to function.
Right. I think with two, we got a quorum, so we can function and go, and we'll keep recruiting for the third.
I did also want to note that between the time this agenda item was posted, another member did resign, so there are actually two additional vacancies if you appointed these two people today.
We'll work on that, but the two's the start.
Is it that tough of a board? Active board, busy board?
It's not, it's not that active, but it has usually three, four cases a year, and what we are, our pressing part is also to make any changes or updates to the merit rules and regulations. The Personnel Board has to review that as well. That's the logjam we're facing right now, and there are rules that are dated that need to be changed and updated as laws have changed, so.
If council acts on the two today, we'll return with the other two shortly.
Okay. Matt Reinhardt.
I'd like to nominate Mary Ann Connors.
Matt Reinhardt nominates Mary Ann Connors and Danny Robbins. Nothing, okay.
I was left up from...
We have another nomination?
I'd like to nominate Paul Chippock.
Jake Johansson nominates Paul Chippock, and that's all that we have available today.
Yeah. That'll work.
Okay. Jake, any question or comment? I thought you punched it. You just didn't punch hard enough. Okay. All in favor of the two nominees, Mary Ann Connors and Paul Chippock. Answer in the affirmative?
Yes.
Any opposed?
You threw us off with that. We used to be seeing it differently. It totally, it bungled us up.
I had four, heard four different responses. All in the affirmative, though. So the two are nominated and approved, six to zero. We have one more on item 10, at-large, West Side and District Four, appointments to the Cultural Council.
Correct, and these nominations would need to be from within the council member's district, so it would need to be on the West Side for Mr. Johansson and within District Four for Mr. Kent.
Says District One, West Side. Would that not be done?
It was, right. Mr. Johansson had previously appointed Reggie, and so even though it's District One, she is the only West Side applicant.
Vice Chair Kent.
Yes, council, I'll nominate David Hart from the East Side for the District Four, from District Four.
And Councilman Johansson.
Sir, I'd like to, I'm going to do a West Side, Don, because I care about the West Side, and that's all you get to choose. So Reggie Santilli was removed, doing missing two or three meetings, but she had some personal issues that have been resolved, and she's willing to jump back in, so I'd like to nominate Reggie Santilli to be reinstalled.
Okay, and no applicants for District Five still? Okay. So we have Reggie Santilli nominated by Jake Johansson, Vice Chair Kent nominated David Hart. Any comments, questions? All in favor of these nominees, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the appointments are approved, six to zero. And that brings us at 7:46 to public participation.
John Nicholson, B-side. You should have got these on your desk. I was sitting on my porch. Somebody gave me a new magazine called New America. It was giving me a headache, so I jotted down a couple of things that I thought, one, why it should not be where we were proposing it. Secondly, a better location where there were no people. We own the land, and we had the possibility of having a fantastic location. Sorry, Don, I don't want a small, I want a huge Best in America facility. So if you would, please, just take a look at it, see what you think about it. I know my handwriting's a pits, but you could read most of it. Secondly, with regard to a comment we had earlier on five, sorry, Jeff, those pitchers, it's our slowest time of the year. Secondly, the weather was not great. And third, I understand it's not really great on B-side, but it is not anything that the county did. And thank God Troy is here. The county tried one time to have a city, actually all of A1A, to take a look at what could be done to improve it. Our mayor was on that committee and didn't show up. Did a couple of times, but with no interest. Then it was brought before the city commission, and it lasted all of about two minutes. That was a discussion, and they refused to discuss it. I'm sorry, that's not working with the county. There were, the beginning, if you look, drive over the bridge, take a look at the north end of the CRA, seven buildings built before Jim Chisholm showed here. Seven. He got in an argument with B-side, and he says, "I can't work with them." So for 17 years, nothing was done on the B-side. That's a long time. We went through three economic booms, and nothing was built. How can you have it where they're building everywhere? We had seven property, or seven people trying to build hotels on the B-side in that area, and the city voted it down seven times. I mean, Bellagio, who would not want a Bellagio? And the city said, "No." You can't do that and say you're for development, all right? No matter what you do, if the city's not behind you and they're not going to help, it's a waste of time, like the meeting that we talked about, all right? The city didn't back it. A year's worth of work by a lot of people, and nothing got accomplished. So I'm asking you, remember, I said you had, all of the communities got to be involved with Daytona Beach, because it fouls you all up. Think of all the money that we're missing. One of those projects, $10 million a year in taxes, and they didn't want it.
Thank you. And that brings us to closing comments from the County Manager, George Rektamol.
Yes, sir. First, I wanted to bring up motocross. At the last meeting, at the end of the meeting, we talked about we were going to be looking at other locations, and we sent out, well, you requested, and we're getting together maps and stuff of other lands. We're diligently working on that as we speak. I guess, just looking for direction on the landfill site because of the concerns that are out there, and we are looking at other areas. I didn't, I wanted to know if you guys wanted me to stand down from that site and put our efforts into the other sites that we're looking at.
Okay, let's find out. Councilman Johansson.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I fully support bailing on this site at this point, and the other thing that Don mentioned the other day is that the $10 million price tag. If it's a different place and it costs more than 10 mil, I think I'm still out, but at this point, there's enough concern from a plethora of East and West Side constituents that I think it's, I think it's in our best interest to look at other places. And, you know, and that same vein, I would, I'm hoping you're talking, again, other cities to find out, because I know there's other lands that you might have access to to make this work with somebody else.
We've talked to the, we have talked to the city of Daytona Beach.
Perfect.
Because of what they're doing.
Yeah.
And we also, we're leaving no stone unturned.
Perfect.
And again, I think that's, the importance is the overall price tag, and, you know, yes, that was on our land we already had, but if it's going to be super high to develop it, you might be better off getting land that's easier to develop, and that's what we'll weigh and we'll bring back. Hopefully, we'll have a couple of options to come back with this time.
Good, thank you. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Dempsey. I'm sorry, Don, hold up.
We'll hear about the jail first before we talk.
Need to hear something about corrections. Councilman Reinhardt.
Nope, not going to bring it up. So there, you lost the bet. I was going to say the same thing with respect to the location and the price tag. Are you looking for a motion and a second? Do you need that, or is it just...
It would be helpful, just, not so much for me, but I think more for the public out there to understand, to calm down.
So I'll make a motion to look for a different location, to abandon this, this location.
Councilman Reinhardt, I'm a tad bit disappointed that you did not take that opportunity right there. From Councilman Dempsey to say yes, you, to say yes, you were going to create a program for small engine repair and have this thing working out of the jail. Darn it.
Keep a fastball high inside, he didn't swing.
Second, we don't have one yet.
Okay. We have a motion by Matt Reinhardt to direct the county manager and staff to look for alternate locations, and it's seconded by Jake Johansson.
I think, and to, and ignore this one.
Yes, I said to abandon this.
To abandon this one.
I just need some clarification, just for a second.
Okay.
Matt, is this to abandon the proposed location, or, excuse me, the location that we had the meeting on?
Yes.
Or the landfill property as a whole?
That location that we mentioned.
So just that specific?
That location.
Okay, I'll wait for discussion.
Councilman Dempsey.
Yeah, I seem to be the point guy on this issue, and just for the record, yeah, I know. And I've said this over and over, ad nauseam, and but for this consulting group, I would have never been labeled as being the councilman who wants to bring in a $10.3 million facility right next to Halifax Drive, because I've never once said $10.3 million. I said, "I don't want to spend any more on this than we do on pickleball," okay, which I think has been totaled at 3.5 million. I do think if we're going to spend $3.5 million to help people play pickleball, we should at least spend $3.5 million to help kids have a place to ride, because I think we all know that there's a need for it, and there is a demand for it. Even the people who are opposed to it still aren't against, they all agree there's a need for it. So, yeah, I don't want this location. I didn't want it from the beginning, but somehow it just ended up in my lap, and I guess that's the way this job works. But, no, I agree, we should find a new location. I'm not trying to impose this sport in somebody's backyard, like I told that nice lady the last meeting. I don't want, I wouldn't want this in my backyard. I get it. So I do agree, there might be other locations. I think we should have probably hired Mr. Nicholson as a consultant before we flew these people in from Chicago and spent all that money to have them come up with a $10.3 million price tag, which to me is absurd, and I would never support a $10 million price tag on this either. And the location, I don't believe they thoroughly, I don't think they looked into it at all, quite frankly. I think it's a terrible location, and, but there is a need, and I think we've got to go somewhere with this, because there is definitely a demand out there for it. And I would like to explore the other areas of the landfill, like John pointed out, because I actually met with an environmental consultant about John's proposed location to the east side of where that, or the north side of where that meeting was held, and it seems like that might actually be a feasible spot, and I believe it's further, or far enough away that the neighbors to the south wouldn't complain, but I'd like to explore that as well. So, yes, just 100%, no $10.3 million, and not that particular location on landfill property. So thank you, guys, for at least entertaining all this motocross discussion since I brought it up over a year ago. Thanks.
Vice Chair Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. And not only entertained it, but I think you had, if not unanimous, close unanimous support to entertain it and talk about it, which goes back to my point earlier tonight of this is not a one-person show. You have to have support if you want to get anything accomplished. And then on this issue, I probably want to thank John Nicholson, because you came with a solution. You know, you don't, you don't just come here and tell us, you know, we're doing good
here and tell us, you know, we're doing good or doing poorly, but you came with, you thought this out, and you put effort into it. And I will leave mine here to be included. You have a copy? Okay, for the official public record, I'm pleased that you have that. And Don, you know, I didn't know you until, I never met you till our first day when we got sworn in. And for a guy that's voted down everything I've ever wanted to do, I always tell people, they say, "How about Don Dempsey?" And I go, "He's a heck of a nice guy. I can't get him to support any thing, but he's a heck of a nice guy." I'm pleased that you've allowed, and I think it's how you live your life, common sense to rule the day. I too never heard you talk about $10 million, or that specific location. So I'm in agreement with this motion that we, I think, Jake, how did you, how did you word it? No, no, I know, but when Jake spoke first, he says something about, did you say NIX the location, or you used something else?
Yeah, I probably said NIX, cancel.
It wasn't, it was great, whatever it was.
NIX, NIX.
Okay. So I'm in agreement with that. I think we can look at other locations. And just like you would not bring something as wildly outrageous as $10.5 million, I would not bring up an idea on how to get our Volusia County residents on the beach at no charge without a real solution, which was $8 million new dollars. I'm still working on you, Don. I'm still working on you. Thank you.
Councilman Robbins.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, Matt, Don, that, you know, listening to the community's concerns, I just didn't want to take the north side of landfill off the table, because towns west, you know, traffic wouldn't be going down that way, and it could be still used as an outlet, and help alleviate any traffic impacts there. We wouldn't be able to obviously use that bad corner there. I'm not in favor of that by Halifax by any means. But on the north side, I just didn't want to take that off the table just yet, because, you know, there is, we have some good buffers there, you know, and some good area. So I'd also like to see, you know, I looked at a lot of the proposals, it's kind of like we got the Taj Mahal price. Can't eat an elephant in one bite. It's like Rome wasn't conquered in a day, you know? And I think if we kind of get a, not just a Taj Mahal price, but hey, let's get our foot in the door price, and let's see how this works up and evolve. Maybe we don't need blacktop roads in a blacktop area. Maybe we can get away with Shell or Millings. Maybe we don't need electric and sewer dumps on the property just yet. There's plenty of campgrounds that don't have it. Guess what? You can call up a porter truck to come pump your stuff, and it's, and you're done, or take it with you. But I would just go with the bare, I would just keep in mind, Don, to go with the bare basics for now. And staff, if we can get, almost like different levels, whenever we, you know, whenever we're looking at it, let's get a bare bones price on these projects, and then get the power windows and power seats price, you know, all the bells and whistles. So, that's it.
Thank you. I agree with everybody, George, I think, except I would, I don't want to change the motion or the second, but I'm going to have a hard time supporting anything on county property. My preference would be, and I think you have some options, is private property, run by a private operator, and then the taxpayers of Volusia County have pretty good protection from liability. And so, Don Dempsey.
Clear. So we're not, this motion and the second, what we're voting on is not to eliminate the entire landfill property, just the proposed site directly north of Halifax. And just to remind you, what Russ said, there's government protections, government immunity that Russ talked about last time we were here. And to remind you, the Speedway, Daytona Speedway is county-owned property, and that's a very, a much more dangerous location that Mr. Johansson risks his life on frequently, race car, at his age, to boot. But, I'm kidding.
You said that last time. The Speedway was county-owned property. I'm not really sure that's that clear cut. And I did talk to the county attorney about it.
There's, there's differences in those two examples, because, and we can speak more on it, but the Speedway property is leased to the racing district. Racing district in turn leases that to.
NASCAR.
NASCAR. So NASCAR is obviously going to be responsible by contract for their own liability. So what Russ was, none of this is saying that liability is a concern that should kill the project, or support the project, through just liability. There is some protection in general law from strict liability, for governments operate this kind of property. And, but if we're negligent, which we have people allege that, whether they're right or wrong, often we would have to defend that. But we can provide more information on that.
Okay.
And I think a lot depends on how you structure it, whether it's a third-party operating it, with a lease, where they have to provide their insurance, or are we operating it, and it's our problem. There's lots of different ways.
You might respond to that, because I have a little bit of understanding of corporate law myself, and.
Well, point order.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
No, I just want to know if it'll affect the vote to abandon and pursue all alternatives. If it doesn't, then it's a conversation for later.
To abandon.
Abandon the current property.
That's not.
Okay, you're right. I'll just, I'll just back down, but I respectfully disagree with that line of thinking as well. I think we could do exactly the same as what NASCAR and the Speedway is doing on this property, through the proper structuring.
I'm not sure you and I are disagreeing.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we can structure.
If you're leasing it to a, if you're leasing it to a third-party that's responsible for their own negligence, then.
Point order.
That would defend and indemnify us. I don't think you and I are disagreeing.
And what is your point?
The point is that the banter that's going about is not germane to the motion.
You're right.
The motion is, are we going to abandon the current motocross location, and as George said, leave no stone, no stone unturned, in finding an alternate location? It was clarified that it doesn't include getting rid of any other part of the landfill, including where the garbage is now, as far as I'm concerned. So, the only thing that we're not doing anymore is considering the current location that Hunden provided us with the diagram. So, this conversation does have anything to do with that, I would like to call a question.
Okay.
Or, Mr. Kent's on there.
Mr. Kent wants to talk, and I, to answer your question, nobody's abandoned the motion yet. It hasn't changed. Vice Chair Kent.
No, and to clarify, I didn't say abandon the motion, abandon the property.
And had we done that, it would have abandoned the motion, is what I meant. We have not abandoned the property. Vice Chair Kent.
Thank you. George, if this gets voted on the affirmative, I'm just, my respectfully request that you direct a press release to go out ASAP about us abandoning this location, and that we reach out to the good people on Halifax Drive, and just let them know, so they can sleep better at night.
That's exactly our intent here. My whole intent of bringing it up is to get some people a little rest.
Thank you, perfect.
Okay, so we, this motion on the floor still stands, seconded by Matt Reinhardt, or the motion by Matt Reinhardt, seconded by Jake Johansson. We've knocked it around, all in favor. Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries six to zero. Were you, did you have, go ahead.
Well, speaking of rest, I'm just going to say that I will be out next week for a few days, taking a few personal days. Ms. Conchin will be in charge in my absence, and I am always available via phone. So, with that, I hope everybody has a great holiday weekend. We've got a big one coming up. It's big out at the beach. We'll have a lot of people busy. I always like to remind everybody, the county government has a lot of people that work through holidays, night shifts. So when we're out there enjoying a holiday, I just like to always think about all those who don't get to do that, because of the nature of what we do, and I send out my appreciation to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Dyer.
Have a good evening.
Okay, that brings us to Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. I would echo George, what you said, to all those that are out there working over this holiday. I pray they have a safe one. I sit on a couple other boards, other than the six that were assigned from the county, one of which was the Boys and Girls Club, which I'm very passionate about. We had an event this last Friday for Celebrate the Children. It was a terrific event. A lot of money was raised, and, which helps that project and, or that program quite a bit. So, if you get the opportunity in upcoming years, I would recommend you attend. There is another one. I sit on the Domestic Abuse Council, and there is a, an event coming up on Saturday, June 8. We are attempting to get a rehab done to the current facility, which is well-needed, and a lot of these dollars will help with that for individuals that are in need, that are victims of domestic violence. And lastly, Happy Memorial Day to all. Thank you.
Councilman Robbins.
I don't have much. I was looking for a showdown between Don and Mike. I've always been curious to see where that would go. But, no, everybody did a good job. Staff, thank you for everything you guys do, and you guys have a good holiday. Be safe.
Councilman Dempsey.
No, I think I was fishing Saturday night with my son, watching the sun go down, and I just started thinking, I wonder if the liability for the Speedway would be the same as the liability for a motocross track, if we structured it in the same way as a, as the Speedway. So, Mike, what do you think? Could we structure this motocross site on county-owned property to have the same protections that the Speedway enjoys with their races on county-owned property?
You could perhaps get there if you're talking about a situation where you're leasing county property to a private party. They operate, they're responsible, and defend and indemnify us.
Isn't that choice C? There's three choices.
Yeah, there's one, that'd be one structure, yeah.
So that's one of the options that's been presented to us. A, which is county-owned, operated, and everything. B, private-public partnership, or C, the same thing the Speedway enjoys. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so if we choose option C, we're right in bed with the Speedway with the same protections. Right? So if Jake gets hurt, he's got as much chance of suing us from his car as he would jumping a triple on his dirt bike.
That's one of the attractive options to contract with a third-party.
Right, okay. So, I would ask that the staff continue to look at county-owned property, look at the other locations, at the landfill, because they may work best. So, and that's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Okay, and there being no objections, counselor, we'll go to Jake Johansson.
A bunch, but quickly. I attended the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council this week with Danny. Few things that I want you to have a little bit of situational awareness on. Couple months ago, weeks ago, our lawyer or counsel for the Regional Planning Council passed away unexpectedly. So we put it on RFP for a new law firm, and they will take over on October 1. Until then, our previous law firm will pick up what this lawyer was doing for us. The Regional Planning Council will have an EOC tabletop with our crew coming up in the next, I think it's next week, if I recall. So they'll be helped facilitating that, and they are spending a lot of time working on military resilience, mainly on the Space Coast and in Orlando, with some minimal effects on us. Onto the Career Source Board. As I think you recall, they are going through a merger where Brevard is merging with, merge is a too nice of a word. They're absorbing the Flagler-Volusia Career Source administration. So, we're in the middle of that right now. The result will be a three-person consortium, which will be one Brevard County Council member, one Volusia County Council member, and one Flagler County Council member. Most major decisions for the Career Source, Brevard, Flagler, Volusia, that have equity in Volusia County, since we, after all, pay, all have to be unanimous decisions, for the most part. So, we will not be, I don't want to call it bully, but we won't be guided by Brevard without having some say in it. The board positions, as it turned out based on the census data, Brevard will have 13 board positions, Volusia will have 12, and Flagler will have three. That board sits right below the three-person consortium, and that's who the staff will, will answer to for day-to-day operations. Laura Coleman and the Brevard and Flagler attorneys have been working very hard on the ILA, the Inter-Local Agreement, and I am pretty satisfied that she's done a great job at getting us equal footing with the new organization. And we are looking at the bylaws right now. All this will happen on July 1, with the main intent of ensuring that our old Flagler-Volusia Career Source services are not hindered. Having said that, there are already one or two that will fall off the plate at least in 2024, just because of all the things that are happening. They can't juggle that many plates. But I will work with my counterparts to make sure that they get at least considered in the budget for 2025. One of the things that I will ask, and it will, I think, I think it may come to you as part of the ILA, that we need to discuss at the next meeting on June 6, will be my standby, or my alternate. And the suggestion from Career Source is that alternate be a staff member, and I am suggesting that it be Suzanne, unless George and counsel say otherwise, but she'll be the stuckey. So, that's it. And that ILA will be on our agenda for June 6. Something has to be done prior to July 1, so take a read through that and ask staff any questions you have. Motocross, we talked about. Thank you for that. I would like the public to know that, yes, Matt, Danny, and I are friends, and we find ourselves in the same place a lot, but we're not old buddies, and we don't talk outside the sunshine. So, just to be clear. I think you handed this out, Mike, to everybody here, George?
Yeah, I think John put that out there to everybody. That.
John Booker's gave you all this. These are some talking points that have already gone, I think, to Congressman Walley. We missed the cutoff this year. And then, we talked about it a little bit this afternoon, and everybody kind of talked about staff's work this weekend. I appreciate that very much. Don't forget that this holiday coming up is Memorial Day, and a lot of people aren't able to sit in these chairs and state their opinions about the freedoms we don't give them, or the freedoms we do give them, because they gave their lives for those freedoms. So, I hope you all at least take a second to think about all those people. And if you don't, can't grasp how many it is, YouTube a video of, or take a look at a YouTube video of somebody walking through Arlington, or the veterans' cemeteries around the nation, and see how many white. Arlington or, or the veterans' cemeteries around the nation and see how many white tombstones there are for, for the folks that have, that have passed for our freedom. And, and that's just stateside. There's plenty of, of others in Europe. So it's pretty amazing and it's important that we take the time to, to remember those, those gentlemen and ladies that gave their lives for us. Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair Troy Kent.
Thank, thank you Chairman. And at-large member Johansson, I can't say it any better than you just did about Memorial, no, about Memorial Day. Thank you for bringing that up and sharing that with everybody. If anybody doesn't know where to go to a Memorial Day ceremony, Ormond Beach at Rockefeller Gardens on Monday will have yet again an amazing event. I believe it starts at 9:00 AM, but don't hold me to that. And I'd love to see you there if you can make it. Just a, a couple of things. The first thing I want to do is I, I want to thank this council. The gentleman that got up that brought his wife and his kids to the meeting, talked about how he had to take off time to, from work to attend this meeting. And it's my hope that he only had to take a couple of comp hours because this council voted to have half of our meetings in the afternoon, early evening. George, thank you for being thoughtful on the agendas, on our evening meetings. It's, it's much appreciated and I just thank this council for their support with, with that. Yesterday, I had a great district dialogue for residents meeting at the Ormond Beach Library. It was a wonderful turnout. There was excellent conversation and discussion. My next district dialogue for residents will be in four months on Monday, September 16th, at the Holly Hill City Hall from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. We talk about anything that any of the constituents or members of the public that want to talk about. I just have two more quick things. George, I loved, loved what I heard tonight, is that you're taking a few days off. It's, it's, you and Mike are the only employees that we can direct. I almost feel like we should direct you and Mike to take time off. And I, I'm not saying that to be funny. I think we're all better when we stop and recharge our batteries a little bit. You two, it's, it's almost like you're married to the job. And it's not a dig at you. It's the job. It requires a tremendous amount from you. And I'm going to say, take this time and I'm going to ask you to please take more time when you deem it appropriate. And George, that's not just for you, that's for Mike. Now unfortunately, you two, I'm also going to ask you, keep your phones on you because if something happens, we, we need you. My hope is that what I'm sharing with you, it will then transfer to all of your employees. The only difference is, please tell them to not take their phones with them. They need to go and enjoy and recharge their batteries and get away from it. And just enjoy, be, be married to their spouse, you know? At the end of the day, this is, it's, it's just a job. And I'm appreciative of the work that all of your staffs do, but George and Mike, you are the lightning rods at times. But that's why you get paid the big bucks. So take your time and take, and take more time. I, I loved hearing that you're taking some time off. Mike, you're up. You need to do it next. And last but not least, my baby, who is 17, is, is graduating on Friday. I can't believe it. So I want to congratulate him and all seniors throughout Volusia County that are graduating this week. You know, hard work equals great results. And I'm proud of all of the seniors and especially proud of mine. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a, a couple things. Also had several town halls in the last week. One of them was not advertised at all because it was a Halifax Yacht Club, which is a private organization and they asked that it not be made public. So they invited their members. It was quite interesting, a good turnout. And just like Mr. Kent just said, when I go, I don't go with a canned speech. I introduce myself, might say a couple of things, and I just open it up for questions. The public loves to ask questions and I think it helps with the constant complaint that we hear that government doesn't pay attention to us and nobody listens. So it's good to get out and listen. The one last night at the city of Lake Helen, I actually did with Webster Barnaby, the, the, their local representative. And it was very interesting questions. Glad that we went. Did a lifeguard proclamation at headquarters and he's standing in the back of the room, so I'm going to say this. I was really glad that Mark Swanson attended that with me. I think it, I think the staff that was there appreciated it. It didn't surprise me that you were there, but just showing interest in your, in the men and women that, that work there. I enjoyed their questions and, and their update on what their, it's, everybody knows it's been a tough year for them with the change in law enforcement responsibilities and then the retirement of, of their, their director, of Andy. So Mark, thank you for coming to that. You didn't eat any pizza, did you?
No.
Okay. Then also, one of the things I enjoy most is an opportunity that I get from serving on this council, was also working with the IRL council. And been able to work with a private clam farmer who has leases from St. Augustine all the way down to Oak Hill. And he periodically deposits young clams in the water because it helps clean the water. It's, clams and oysters are very helpful in, in cleaning water there. It's an all-day affair, except for this time. Last week, he deposited 10 million clams, about the size of a head of a pin. And if you look at him under a microscope, it looks just like a clam. Shell, everything, just tiny. But it took a few minutes because for the first time, he deposited those clams from a drone. So it was really interesting to see the blend of technology and God's creation of clams to clean up water. And I, I look forward to that. Mike Sullivan and I and the Director of the IRL, Dr. DeFreeze, are working on a program to restore the seafood industry in Volusia County. And it will, it will start with, with clams and oysters. That's, it's, you know, started now, but it needs to greatly expand. And he's, Mike Sullivan, it just has tremendous ideas on how to do that along with Dr. Osborne at Whitney Research Lab in St. Augustine. So I'm excited about seeing that develop. The... Clay's not here? So I, oh, he is. Shoot, I wasn't going to talk about you if you weren't here. I wanted to thank Clay and Kerry Luzinger. We've all had residents call in and say, I've had trouble with something in the county. I had, I had a constituent, well, he's not really a constituent. He's not a full-time resident here. He owns homes in South Carolina and Volusia, and Volusia is his secondary home. But he had an issue that he couldn't get solved with permits, with fence and windows. Used good competent contractors to do that who didn't call for the, the final inspection. And the resident didn't know he was supposed to. He thought the, anyway, I spoke to Clay about it and, and he, this part-time resident has a home up for sale and it was closing in a few days. And he was in an absolute panic. Now, I don't know what he sounded like when, when Kerry spoke to him, but to make a really long story short, they were able, because the, the permits had been pulled, they expired, they were able to resubmit the permits and get it taken care of in a really timely manner. And I love seeing that. We're not always able to act that fast and be that responsive because Clay's division is, is one of the busiest in the county. But Clay, I wanted to say, Kerry's not here. I hope that you will pass that along to Kerry and tell him that the, the, the resident appreciates it. He went from a, I never want to come to Volusia County again to, well, maybe I'll buy another property. So we'll see what happens there. So the next thing I want to say, I wanted to preface it with that because I, I do appreciate the hard work that code enforcement does. Mike, I had brought up before, the, Mike Dyer, the possibility of code enforcement officers wearing body cam because it protects them from hearsay, from, you know, from, it protects them. It also protects business owners and property owners that they know that, it helps them trust us more, that they know that what we say stands. Mike, you sent out an email and said there are some considerations about that since they're not pure law enforcement. So my question to you is, I, I would like to continue that discussion. What do we need to, do you need to, to bring it back to the council and discuss all those different parameters and the way it will affect us?
And we are, we are in the process with my office and George's staff, bringing something back to you.
Okay.
For you to have that discussion, discussion, based on prior council direction. What makes it a little, the best we can tell, it has not really been fully embraced by non-law enforcement officers, by your local governments yet. And I think the reason is, doesn't mean you can't do it. I think the reason is that because of the privacy statute on recording, because they're not law enforcement, they're not exempt, so they have to get consent. And, and violations of it are scary because that personal liability, the code officer, you can sue the county and it's a, it's a felony. So you would have to get consent before you would start recording.
Before they ever turn it on.
Or, and/or, because I think you could do this at the same time or maybe pursue this, and we'll say this when we have the fall presentation to you, is we could ask the legislature to change that privacy law to include your code officers in that exemption. I, I will say that the way the laws are now, it does, it does put your staff that would be using them that aren't law enforcement in a more difficult position. They're going to have to be trained on how to do that and obtain consent. And that's something that police officers currently don't have to do. For example, if I come up to you and I'm a code officer, I have to get your consent before I can start hitting record on my button in writing, or I could be charged with a crime. So it does put a little more burdens or obligations on your staff if, if you were to do that.
Okay. But you're bringing it back. We can discuss it. Councilman Robbins, something on this?
Yeah, just to support you on that. I, I don't know if I brought it up or not. Street crimes and when we did knock and talks and stuff like that, we would always, even though we had a body camera, we would always have a form that we would deploy as well. It literally took 10 seconds to read the form to the, the person that you did, whether it's a casual contact or a, you know, a reason that you, you were there, took 10 seconds to get that form signed. You file it away and you can still maneuver around some of this with the proper protections. But I would, I would be willing to support you with that and as well as make it a legislative priority. But at least we'll have the form or a, in the event that legislative action isn't taken. We can still push forward, I think. Thanks.
Okay. Next to last thing, we've talked about the, the riding. It's, your idea was for competition since that, no? The, the motocross track. Competition. Get off the phone. The, since that, even before that's come up, I've gotten a lot of questions from people that there's no place to ride in Volusia County. And that's a common thing I see on Facebook. There's no place to ride in Volusia County. The, I asked Brad Burrball about that and he said, no, we actually have 32.6 miles of where you can legally ride an ATV, not for competition, but just for father, son, daughter, mom, daughter, dad. And he sent a, a map. I think, I think Councilman Robbins has posted that map, that information before, no? About where you can ride an ATV. In any case, I'm going to post it. Pardon? Most of it is around Lake, Lake George Forest. Not all of it, but a lot of it. So I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask Brad to email that to you as well. I can't email it to you. I could email it right now.
Brad's going to send it out. I already talked to him, to everybody.
Good. Because that would be good for the public to know. It is popular. It's a very popular sport and it would be nice, I've, I've heard from several riding clubs that have asked me, why do we have no places to ride? So we can give them this information. I've not ever ridden there. Have you?
You can go to Ocala Forest and ride?
Yeah, but I want it in Volusia County.
Well, you, you understand, that's, that's unmonitored, very dangerous, one-way trail system. So there's a lot of head-ons. And I'm talking about in a controlled environment where there's flaggers, where there's, you know, easy access for personnel in case of an injury or something like that. But yeah, I know people who've been severely hurt riding in those uncontrolled trail systems. But that's completely different than the sport of motocross.
It is.
That's trail riding.
And I understand that. I just, I, I'm hearing from the public to say that, why can't we go ride somewhere now? And so I actually went, pardon? Yeah, I went through...
Great that it exists. I didn't know about that.
I went through that argument in New Hampshire. Never lived there, but I would go up every winter and ride snowmobiles. And same thing, narrow, you're talking about narrow paths, not two lanes, and you're always looking for the other guy coming towards you. The, some of the population tried to get rid of it completely. And they did for, for about a month. And then the riders banded together, and I think the RATV riders would do the same. They banded together and say, look, it's kind of like the dog beach with, what, what's being done. We'll pick up. We'll make sure there's no garbage there. We'll, we'll grade the, but anyway, that has nothing to do with us in New Hampshire, except that it's, could be similar to this, a riding area for ATVs. If clubs would agree to police it, keep it clean and, and do what they can to keep it safe. Actually, in New Hampshire, the fear was head-on collisions. But it, fortunately, it never happened. I don't know if you can go as, well, you can go just as fast on a snowmobile.
I can show you a broken toe from my head-on that I had on a trail.
Snowmobile?
No, dirt biking.
Okay.
Up, up north.
All right. Thank you. So thank you, George, for sending that out to everybody. And last thing, I also want to mention Memorial Day. My family really enjoys Veterans Day because there's, there's a bunch of vets. But Memorial Day is, takes it several notches above. About three weeks before my father died at 89 years old, he had served as a medic in the US Army. He served as a medic during the D-Day evasion. Fortunately, because he might not have ever come home, he was not on the beaches of Normandy. He was in London at a hospital that received the guys that got arms, legs and heads blown off on the beaches. But he received those guys that were flown in. I had no idea until the last two weeks of his life when he finally opened up. I kept, tell me about your service, Dad. He told me about an 18-year-old kid that came from Normandy. He told me about an 18-year-old kid that came from Normandy, my father knew he was going to die, the kid didn't know it, because he probably don't want to admit it, and he was literally in my father's arms, and the kid said, "I don't want to die, but tell my mom," and those were his last words, and when he, when he told me that, it put Memorial Day in a whole nother light, because so many people, Jake has already said this, so many soldiers didn't get to come home, they gave their lives for us, they put everything on the line, and even some of the guys that came back, like my father and thousands of other like them, were forever changed because of what they saw and for their willingness to go up to that line and put themselves on the line, so Memorial Day is really important. Mike, do we, we probably have listed on our Facebook page or the website, different Memorial Day events around the county? Pardon me?
Yes, sir, we will post that as we get closer to the date, toward the end of the week.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:39.